Okay, welcome to City Council Work Session. This is Monday, August 11, 2014. It is 4:32. We're going to get started. Before we do, Councilman Fleming, did you have some words?
Yes, thank you. You know, this has been on my mind for quite a while, really. That is, these work sessions and what we do. And in effect, what we do, as we all know, we review the items that are going to be on next Monday's agenda. And that's not all bad. I mean, because there might be cases or questions about some of those issues, and it's good to have a work session to air our opinions and so forth and concerns prior to the official meeting. But there are a lot of times, I went through this this morning at home, and there's nothing inherent to me that's very earthshaking. And then I'm thinking, not today, but in the future, could we consider maybe, obviously, giving the council an opportunity to question or comment on any one of the agenda items for the next meeting? I'm not trying to hide that at all. And there probably are going to be issues and questions, and I'm not against that at all. But otherwise, you would think we could come up with topics for future discussions, where we could have more of a give and take on different ideas and what we should be doing and so forth. Anyway, that's all I had to say. So I'm not being critical, we've been doing this for some time, but, you know, there are many city councils that don't even have work sessions. And when we do have them, I think we could be maybe more productive if we took more time among ourselves to kick around different ideas or problems that we think the city's facing and so forth. End of speech.
I say well said. I missed the roundtable when we were elbow to elbow. I really do. But, you know, that's, it's about work. To me, a work session is about working it out, you know?
Right, right.
You know, it's not like-
Anyway, it's just an idea.
And Bob, I would just add to that, that I would like to see us not sit like this for work sessions, but to sit facing. Because it's very difficult for me sometimes to get the gist of something maybe someone is saying, because I can't see-
Oh, I know.
-around the corner. You know, if Tim's sitting here, for instance, like I could see it today pretty good. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for us to change the configuration for work sessions that are here. I don't like the way they were handled before, when they were in the little room, and it was really kind of secretive, and it was crowded, and, you know, we tried to show staff and everything in there, and people were not pleasant with each other. But I would like to, I mean, I don't know if there's a way to temporarily move these tables for the-
I feel the same way. This is not conducive to-
It's not.
...by people sitting here exchanging ideas. It's a formal, you know-
And I don't have a problem, you know, the microphones, that's fine, but if we could have a way where we could see each other, I just think it would be more conducive to working through things, so that's my-
Maybe I'll sit on the other side, right at caution the mayor.
I'm not going to sit on the other side, so all the people are doing is looking at my bald head. No thanks. But I think we found a future discussion item to see if there's a way that we can, because again, I like the fact that we are out in the open, but I do miss the, when we were in the, in the room, because, I don't know, it just seemed like it was more the atmosphere and everybody-
Well, I mean, we really had exchanges there.
Yeah, it was, it was good stuff, so I'm gonna make sure to put that down, but if we can have it for a future-
But maybe, Bob, what you're saying is maybe we could, I mean, because some of these are just general things, and I think Shane does a good job of zipping through them most of the time, but I'm with you, sometimes we don't need to talk about them.
And you know, there are times, looking to the future, then, where maybe we would say, let's invite somebody in here to make a presentation on some subject. And we do this occasionally, I know. But there are times, like I know tonight or this afternoon, we have this crime thing on our minds, all of us. And Jim has told me now, the chief is going to talk to us about that at the end of this meeting. But here's a case, again, we're inviting someone in like that to discuss these issues is a good thing.
Right.
And I don't mind sitting on the other side of the table if you want me to.
I'll sit there with you, the two of us, we will, since we're the end, we're the end of the table.
Everybody always wants to sit with Bob. We're moving along, we're gonna get started.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to comment.
Anytime, Councilman, all of you. Okay. But, but good point, as well, Bob. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna roll right down the list. And I want to say, here he comes. Shalom. And my grandson is watching, this is his first work session, he's watching, so I'm gonna say, hi, Keegan, how you doing? Grandpa loves you. Okay.
Tim?
Yeah, you did miss Bob Spiel. We'll touch on that before, I'm just gonna let you play cleanup before we get out of here, just to-
I can pull the chair from-
Tim will appreciate that. First is a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 162, Fire Prevention Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. This is the second reading. Chief, do you want, do you want to, do you have anything that you want to add? Let me try that again. Do you have anything that you feel like you need to add to that?
No, I haven't changed anything.
Counsel, do you guys have any questions on that? I think we've covered most of it last week.
I haven't had any more comments about it, so.
Okay.
On that, if we agree, we're not going to charge, though, or is that still on the air?
They're gonna go, they're gonna go to the fire station and pick up, no?
Just the rule is not permanent.
Right, right. The money's gonna come in if they, if we have to make a phone call, and they're, they're not doing it right. That's where the, that's where the-
Right.
And the other thing, but yeah, for those that don't know, the Chapter 162, this is in regards to the burning pits in the backyard.
Are there any fees for anything in the way the ordinance is written, or it just says that any fees would be set by resolution at a later date?
It says there's no permit needed.
It would just be a fee if they did something wrong, or it would be a-
Well, fine.
Yeah, fine, yes.
The language that's in there right now is there's no permit needed, so there's no fee associated. There would be, you know, if they were caught burning illegally, then there's a fine that's assessed. I don't know if you call that, I mean, who sees that money? I don't see that money, but that's the only-
Similar to what some other bigger cities are doing.
What was the time, what was the timeframe on, on the weekends?
11:00 AM.
Oh, was, what's that?
It was 11:00 to 1:00. 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, every day of the week. There's no differentiation.
Anybody have any further questions for the chief?
No questions, only that now that this has come about, I'm seeing more and more and more of those things that have probably been there all the time, I just hadn't realized it.
We've been on so many of those calls where you show up and the people, they're mad, and I agree, they'll be like, well, I went to Lowe's, and I bought this, and they didn't say anything, there's no sign, so I thought it was legal. I'm sorry, but, so I think a lot of them had them stored in the garage or wherever, just hoping that someday it would be okay. So I have no, I've had nothing but positive. I've had one person, I haven't had one email, one phone call, nobody stopped down and said, this is a terrible idea. Actually, the, the fire marshals in the other cities, some of the bigger cities, I was really, I was surprised when, like Sioux City especially, like, nope, it's been a good thing here, we haven't had any problems with it. I'm thinking, okay. I just assumed that we were probably, you know, people are limiting fires, not trying to expand the opportunities for open burning, but it's, I've had a lot of positive comments, so.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks.
Any other comments on, on the burning? Okay. Next, we have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading, this is also a second reading, of an ordinance rezoning the property located east of Osborne Street between Franklin Street and Mount Pleasant Street, from M1 Light Industrial to R3 Two Family Residential Zoning District ET.
Again, no changes on this one, rezoning a property that individual had purchased looking to use as a residential property. The current zoning prohibits that. And then also cleaning up a few non-conforming residential properties to bring them into compliance with their zoning map.
Shane, can we fast-track that? I don't think there was any opposition or to that.
I don't have any problem with it. Anybody?
No, I don't have a problem with it. Okay.
Okay, we'll move that one forward. Next, we've got a preliminary, or a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 17.75.104, District signage regulations of Title 17, development programs zoning code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
No changes on this one either. Again, this is raising the allowed height of a sign from six feet to 12 feet for institutional uses, as long as it's 100 feet away from adjoining residential property.
Were you guys comfortable with moving that one forward as well?
Yes. Yeah, that's, it's just the height that's changing, so.
Okay. All right, you're making it easy for CT. All right, we keep, we're moving. We have a, this is the final adoption of an ordinance amending Section 31.01 Creation, composition of Chapter 31 Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code. Point guard.
Great. I haven't gone down to that part of this, but Riverfront Advisory Committee is- I have to find it, or it is in the packet. All right, page 23. This is one with nine members on it. We currently do allow residents from, or we don't allow residents from outside of the city on here. We've had a request to have residents from outside of the city. This would allow up to three, or majority, no, it allows up to four, because a majority have to be within city limits, to be from outside, to outside city limits in the greater Burlington area, which would also allow over into western Illinois. An additional change that we're adding is some additional language. My position is, serves as an ex officio on there. This adds a language that's, that's the city manager or an individual appointed by the city manager in their, in the city manager's place, which is how we have functioned for, I don't know how long, but at least since before I got here.
Jim, is, who's currently doing that for you? Is someone currently doing that for you?
Ryan Gurley.
Okay.
Park superintendent.
Which works pretty well to have the, it really works better to have him doing that in terms, in regards to, he has supervisory responsibility over that area.
And he doesn't have any voting power?
No. No, it's an ex officio, so it's an advisory role.
No.
Okay. Next, we've got number, next, we've got number five, I don't think they're urgent. This is also the final adoption as well of an ordinance amending Section 37.02 Membership, terms of Chapter 37 Renewable Energy and Conservation Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code. And this is, this is the same thing. Does anybody need to comment on this, about the changes that were made in the wording?
Not I.
Okay. Those should go by pretty quick anyways, next Monday. Next is a resolution awarding contract for CDBG Downtown Fasad Improvement Project. ET?
This is for the Fasad project, the downtown properties. I did talk to the architect on this, and he did have some concerns, I guess, had a couple contractors didn't feel they had enough time to get a full bid in on it, and they had asked for some extension on the bid opening, which was scheduled for tomorrow at 2:00. He did, they did talk to the state and regional planning, and they would be allowed to do an addendum to that to extend it. He would, two options, one would be till this Thursday, we'd still have the hearing on Monday. Didn't feel that would really give them much time to, for the contractors to get numbers in. They felt that a week would give them more time and have more bidders on the project, so he would recommend that we delay the bid opening till next Tuesday, which would push back our approval of this. I know we're wanting to get this going, but he also felt it was good to have more contractors bid on it and get better numbers on it. So his recommendation was till next Tuesday, the 19th. So that, I guess, is what he would like to see from this.
Essentially, I think you're looking at, if we don't have an, if we don't move the date, you're probably likely only have one bid come in.
One bidder, and he didn't feel he'd have a complete bid on the project either. He felt it wouldn't be as detailed as he'd like to have it, so.
Do you think-
And that was for the masonry part of it.
Do you think you need more than a week on it, Eric, or, I mean, as extension?
He felt a week. The contractors he talked to, he felt a week would be appropriate, and they would be able to-
Because it is pretty quick, I think, from the time, because we just, okay.
And we can have some discussion about it, we can wait, we can have that pushed back two weeks, too. It's not going to damage anything in regards to timing, we're going to be out another extra two weeks-
It'd be September 1st, then.
-before we get to the next council meeting.
But that was my-
Yeah, I think-
That was my thought process, and if you're going to give them the week, give them two.
Okay, is everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, moving right along. Number seven, next is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the state of Iowa for Transportation Safety Improvement Program, TSIP, funds for site-specific improvements, including new signals and extended left-turn lanes at the intersection of agency and the entrances of Walgreens Kmart on behalf of the City of Burlington. Stevie.
Mayor and city council, if it's okay with you, I'd like to discuss all three of these at, at one time, because they are very similar. They are all part of the TSI, or Traffic Safety Improvement Program. It kind of follows with a lot of acronyms here. We had a TEEP, or Traffic Engineering Assistance Program, engineering evaluation kind of done of that quarter last year. The good news is, that's money that basically the state provided 100 free hours, and Howard R. Green did complete that study. And as a part of that, they were looking at three different traffic signals, one at the Columbus Drive area, the one that this current resolution refers to, the Walgreens Kmart, or the Manor Burlington Crossings property, and then the Hobby Lobby Dollar General. So basically, this is, regional planning is submitting on our behalf for this, and long story short, we need a accompanying resolution to, to make this final for submittal, so.
What's the cost that goes with these?
Right now, we don't have the exact cost estimate. I just visited a little bit with Zach, and we'll have that a little bit later in the week.
But we'll have that before we vote.
I do know that we budgeted for the signalization, basically, of the Manor Crossings property, $285,000. That's in the CIP budget. But it was felt, I know when Zach and Ryan Thornburg worked on this, they felt it would be better to submit three separate, we stand a better chance of landing some funds by submitting three separate. And Zach is here, if you've got any more specific questions at this point, we're lucky to have him here today.
What kind of range are you thinking about, Zach, on dollar amounts?
Just to follow up with what Steve was saying, we actually had the people in charge of the TSI program, they came down to our office for something completely unrelated, but I had, at that time, Steve Hardman came over, and we sat down and talked with the state about how to structure this, and that's why we did this, three separate applications that it was kind of guided us that way into develop the applications. So I'll start on the west end, actually, there's three separate ones, but I'll start at the west, where we're Hobby Lobby Dollar General, where it's the wire span. We're actually going to apply for what's called the traffic control device. And essentially, what that does, it pays for the cost of the materials for the signal, but it won't pay for the installation. So it would cover whatever the cost is to buy a new signal, and then the city would have to come up with funds or use your own staff to install those. The other two are the Kmart Walgreens intersection, and then the one down at Hy-Vee. And those are through a separate category, category called site-specific, and how much you can apply for is based on a benefit-cost ratio. And so we kind of, you can't really do that, I guess, without having the cost, which we're still waiting on, but we kind of worked backwards and figured out what the benefit would be. And based on that, at the Hy-Vee intersection, you can apply for a maximum of $500,000. So the Hy-Vee intersection there would be eligible for that maximum amount. The one at Kmart doesn't have, at least, any accidents, so we're probably looking more at like 75, 200,000 is the max we could apply for.
So what does that do? But what, what is it doing? I guess, what is it doing? I mean, there are traffic signals there, so what, what is it doing?
So the one at Kmart and Walgreens, I guess, is tied to any of the new developments going there, and I think from my understanding, is requests from the companies to have that installed. Down at Hy-Vee, what we'd be looking at is really more of an operational improvement, adding, it would actually add some pavement, it's not just the turny signals, it's going to install new signals, it would actually add left-turn lanes there.
Oh, okay.
And it would remove an access, actually, I didn't even think about bringing it up, but there's an access kind of between the Hy-Vee and the Kmart one.
Yep.
And so it would remove that, because there's a lot of people that kind of dodge the light, and often there's a lot of accidents there.
That's what I do, yes.
So get rid of that access, and then add a separate turn lane, so it's really an operational and safety kind of combination improvement at the Hy-Vee intersection.
If it's eligible for 500,000, is that like an 80% funding?
No, they cover-
They'll cover 100% up to that?
Up to 100% up to 500,000.
And from the-
And that's the same thing on the traffic control device, they'll cover the 100% on the, just on the material, though. Like I said, you have to pay for the installation.
And at the Walgreens, we're preliminarily budgeting 250, 270,000 for-
I think we had 285 there, that's where we had it in the budget. So I, like I said, we haven't seen the number, Ryan's supposed to have those tomorrow or Wednesday, and that's-
Steve, were you counting?
Columbus Drive, isn't that going to be an awful short distance between two lights?
I would say so, yes.
It's very short. What's the thing-
And even go the other direction between there and-
And Roosevelt, yeah.
Jim probably wants me to tell you, we thought, we looked at a roundabout, but-
No, my God.
Jim, who?
I keep on saying it. So I don't think it'll, it's feasible, but that is one of the options that has been looked at.
Every time you've brought that up, I said no.
In our opinion, this is not the place to put the first roundabout.
Yeah, I can't picture it there at all, but those lights are really going to have to be synchronized, aren't they?
Yes.
So you would be shutting some, some entrances or exits, you'd be shutting off at least one going in. And then what percentage of that is the grant paying for? I mean, for instance, if you budgeted 250, just roughly, on the one light, this grant would pick up what part of that?
Well, like Zach said, it's 100% of what the cost-benefit ratio allows, so.
That Walgreens would be-
Okay, so that one's that-
70,000 of it, from what he just said, was the cost. They'd cover 70,000, if we're looking at 280,000, we'd be paying the rest.
Because we're having to pick up the labor, the, that's just for the materials for the lights and so on.
And then there's a cap, there's a cap on it. So that one is going to be capped, but the 70,000 figure and anything above that's going to be us, and-
I think, Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've got like two years to, if we're awarded this, don't we just spend it?
Yes.
Isn't this the one, so?
So this is our best, this is our-
It's good to get it in, just so if the, if the developments all come, we have kind of a better game plan to have some financial assistance if we're awarded the grants.
Is this probably one of our best shots at getting money to help fund that? Is that what you're-
This is the shot.
This is the shot? Okay, thank you.
We talked about a couple other funding sources, but I don't, I don't think they're realistic. Yeah. So just to clarify here, so this would be the Hy-Vee agency, so it'd be adding some turn lights, left turn lights for this direction, left turn lights this way, and then replacing the signals to align with those left turn lights. Getting rid of this access here, and then new signals here, and actually, it would, there'd be some extension of the, actually, this one, I think, is fine extending this turn light here. And that's all, goes back to this STEEP study that Steve mentioned. So I'll try and clarify this, and these both would be site-specific applications, which is its own category. So that depends on a benefit-cost ratio, ratio what you can apply for. So based on accidents that have happened here, you could request up to 500,000 at 100%. And here, we're probably looking at around 70, 75,000 at 100%, but it's probably going to be more than that, so whatever above that, the city would be up for.
As we talked about what our portion was going to be, the intent had been that as we sold land off of the Manor Development, that that was going to be the source of funding to cover this. Right now, we don't have a project that's pushing us into getting any land sold there. And as you mentioned, two years, that puts us in a cycle there where we have some time to evaluate, are we going to get a land purchase done or not?
And just to follow on the two-year cycle, too, part of the DOT recommended us applying for both on the separate projects, and kind of say, well, for some reason, you only have one this year, you still got that window, where you can come back and apply for it again, if that makes sense.
It's a good idea.
They were very helpful in how to structure this and how to put everything together.
As we're doing some of these conversations, I know that there have been some conversations today that have been down with Ryan, just asking about signalization of lights moving to the west from 61 as well, over towards, what is it, west, west Burlington Street? What's, is that the area over by where G E is?
Yeah, that's the line where Lowe's involves.
And they thought that they were going to, they should be able to get something accomplished with getting a little bit better synchronization of those lights. It's an issue that had come up over the course of this last week.
I know the lights at Hobby Lobby net were loop-activated at one time, but we've had so many problems with that, they're now just timing-based.
So will you be going to a visual or some type of an actuator on that with, if this goes through?
Yes, I would say so. And like I said, try to get some synchronization as you had east and west on agency.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep it short, Bob.
It's all right.
Any other questions, counsel? You guys satisfied?
No.
Okay.
No questions.
The other three were, which he already addressed, the left lane, intersection agency, and then the control device, so we'll move forward with discussion items next. First, we have complete streets presentation. Zach?
I guess I didn't need to sit down. I didn't formally introduce myself, I know most of you, my name's Zach James, I'm the planning director with the Southeast half Planning Commission, and also, I'm a community co-chair for a group called Des Moines County Living Well. And about a year ago, we came to the council and talked about, or I guess really kind of asked a request to organize a committee focusing on complete streets policy, asked to have a couple council members pointed to that, as well as some city staff. And really, at that point, we had Tim and Becky from the council, I guess, offer their services, and then we also asked for some city staff. And so we really have four people that we've invited, Eric, Charlie Nichols, Ryan Thornburg, and then Steve as well. And we had our first meeting on July 23rd. And so I guess I got a request from Jim and Eric, and I think it all started, came from Tim, maybe just to give a little bit of update about kind of where we're going or what we're doing, and then maybe talk about kind of where, where we're going to head and what our outcomes are going to be. So I just want to recap real quick, Des Moines County Living Well, and what, what our purpose is, and what we're about, and why we were kind of pursuing this in the first place. And I've shortened this up, but our mission was to create opportunities for every citizen to lead a healthy lifestyle, and it kind of goes on from there. But what I wanted to point out, and this is kind of where the complete streets comes in, and why it was a goal of ours, but we want to give people the chance to be healthy, whether or not they choose to do it, we want to have the facilities there where they can actually have the choice to do that. So that's a reason why we pursue this from Des Moines County Living Well, and why we're pushing it. If you remember, we did a Burlington, Better Block Burlington event down South Main Street in front of the Depot, where we converted that to a two-lane street with bike lanes, and parked it for a week last, I guess it was early last spring. And that was kind of education, a way to get some feedback, and we got some good feedback, and that led to us coming to the council. So just a little more about tied to the health and why you're pushing this as well, or some other things that were happening in the community and still are, that kind of build on this. As I mentioned, Des Moines County Living Well, we're really pushing for that goal to create opportunities for people to be healthy, and the complete streets was a goal of ours. The Imagine Campaign addressed five visionary ideas over five years. One of theirs is to be the healthiest community in Iowa. They really do want to push for the blue zones at that time, and I believe had a lot of support from the city to pursue that. Unfortunately, we didn't get that, but I did want to put, put this out there and remind everybody that if that was to be a designation, the complete streets policy was something that if that was to be a designation, the complete streets policy was something that was going to be required, that blue zone designation. And then one other thing that I mentioned, and I talked about this in our first meeting in July, the Burlington Comprehensive Plan, the plan that was adopted like two years ago, kind of a twenty-year visionary idea. There's a statement there that I pulled out, this is a direct from that document, "The city will establish and use a complete streets ordinance required. Consideration and provision for bike pedestrian users whenever a street is constructed or reconstructed, including a year requirement." So, you know, this kind of started from Des Moines County Living Well, it's a big health push, and there's other health initiatives going on. And I did mention this, but we're trying to kind of work together now and create a, I guess, a joint effort with the Imagine Campaign instead of kind of working separately. But then also, I mean, in the Comprehensive Plan, there's a lot of things talking about sustainability, biking, and that was directly in there. So there's a lot of reason why we're doing this and support behind this. So as far as kind of, since the last meeting, where we came to the council last fall, we talked about creating this Complete Streets Committee, so it took us a while to get to that, we had several things come up to push that back, but we didn't get that group formed, we made the request to the city with the city council and staff, we did the same thing in West Burlington, and they have some appointees, and then we got some, just some interested community members to join in this as well. So we formed the committee, but then we needed kind of a process to follow and something to guide the development. So what we did is we contacted a couple communities in Iowa, the city of Muscatine, and then Waterloo and Cedar Falls. And there's a couple reasons why we did this. Both of those communities won awards, two thousand thirteen Best Complete Street Policy Awards from Smart Growth America. So they were good policies that have been put in place, they were in Iowa, but then also, they were kind of similar situations to what we were looking at, accomplished Muscatine, it's a river community, very similar size, very close to here. And then Cedar Falls, Waterloo, we're looking to do something that's across two boundaries in Burlington and West Burlington. So it's a good example of how these two communities could work together. So we reached out to their planning staff, kind of asked them what their process was and how they adopted complete streets policy. And essentially, what they told us was they use this Complete Streets Local Policy Workbook. It's just a guide we handed out at our first meeting that we had in late July, and it just walks you through ten steps. It says, these are the ten things that need to be in complete streets policy. So we basically split this up over four meetings, we had the first meeting. Actually, the first thing we talked about wasn't really one of the elements, but it was a good conversation. So our first meeting, we focused on two things, pursuing the right policy, which is just a discussion about what do we currently do to make transportation decisions? How do we decide what we do when it comes to transportation? If a project comes to the council, how do you guys decide what to do? So we had a good discussion about that, I thought it was a very good discussion, I'm not sure what you guys, your thoughts were. But then we also had a discussion about vision, and what do we want our streets to be, what do we want them to look like? And that's the first element from that handbook. So we've got three other meetings that we want to arrange, we have the second one scheduled for August twenty-second, or I'm sorry, twenty-seventh. And what we're going to talk about at that meeting, we're going to review that vision, we've taken the time, the staff, to go through the comments we got and develop that into a statement. The three topics we're going to focus on then are users and modes. I guess I could go back and talk about what complete streets are, if you have the ability, but it's designing streets. I guess what I'll say is just designing streets for everyone, all users of all abilities is what I usually say, whether you're riding transit, a bike, walking, driving a car, driving a truck, we're designing our streets for everybody to use. And I guess one thing to clarify that is, because they always say streets, but I think we need to make sure too, we don't just say streets, we should probably be right away, because the right away might be sixty feet where the road's only forty feet, so we need to think about that other twenty feet of space and what we're doing with that. But the topic for that meeting, that's one of them, is user to modes, who are we designing this for? The bikes, the pedestrians, people with disabilities, people who are driving trucks, people in cars, those types of things, we'll discuss that. There's a topic called projects and phases, how do we apply our policy to all types of projects? Whether it's a reconstruction, whether it's a new construction, whether it's just a resurfacing, how do we make sure we incorporate complete streets ideas into those types of projects? But then also, how do we fit it into the planning stage upfront, or when the department's doing design work, when they're actually constructing it, and once it's constructed, how do we make sure that we're designing complete streets? And then the last one we're going to talk about is exceptions, so what exceptions should we have? Complete streets aren't for every street, there may be times where, you know, the cost of the improvements might outweigh the need in that area. So do we really need to do it in this place or this area? So we need to discuss what those exceptions are and where this shouldn't apply. And I think that might be, one of the things Tim was maybe concerned about was why he asked me to come here. So that'll be a topic though, that'll be the next one, and I can talk, I'll talk more about that in a minute. So we'll have that meeting at the end of the month, then we have a third, a third meeting, hopefully sometime in September, where we talk about design standards. I think, you know, from our meeting, we talked, Ryan, I believe, said the city uses SUDAS, which is kind of a statewide standard. But what else is out there? Federal Highway talks about using other guidelines besides just the standards, either the ASHTO standard or the SUDAS standard. There's a lot of things out there from ASHTO actually themselves, there's things from the National Association of City Transportation Officials, there's things from Institute of Transportation Engineers about designing streets with complete streets elements. So making sure we incorporate those things. We'll talk about complementing context, again, this kind of addresses where streets are at and what elements fit into that geography. At our meeting, I showed a lot of examples and a lot of ideas that are complete streets, and I'm not talking about them today, maybe I should, but I kind of showed, here are things that would show what a complete street looks like, things like bike lanes or sidewalks, or reducing lanes from four lanes to three lanes, all these different things, you know, street trees, and there's, there can go on, there's tons of different things. But understanding the right place for the right, the right elements, because they don't always fit everywhere. We want to make sure about street connectivity, that's one of the other ten items, making sure that we're integrating the system, so we're not just doing, you know, Washington Street out front and then doing Division Street right over here, how do we make sure we're connecting the pieces? And they want to make sure it's adoptable by all agencies, so this policy's for the city and in their process, but what about a state road like Highway sixty-one? How do we make sure that they're thinking about it too? Or what about private development, because they're willing to incorporate these things into, you know, site plans or something like that? So that was meeting number three. The last meeting would focus on performance standards, so how do we know if we're being successful or if we're accomplishing anything? And then implementation, I think is probably the most important thing, and I think this might address some of Tim's concerns as well. But this is, what are the steps that we take to actually do something? You know, how do we put, what we talk about at these other meetings, and put it into action? And it could be set up a variety of different ways, it could be something very specific that says, we're going to do this on every project, on every street, we're going to request. So it could be something very relaxed, and I've talked to Eric about this several times, and I think, because he's part of Des Moines County Living Well, and what we've talked about is getting something in place so that when we're doing projects, we just consider these ideas. And that doesn't lock the city into any financial decision. Could be a simple checklist that just says, when we're doing a project, did we think about replacing curves? Did we think about replacing sidewalks? Did we think about reducing the amount of payment? Did we think about adding a bike lane, you know? And just having a checklist, why or why not we did this, or what it might have cost to do that? I mean, it could be set up certain ways, but that's what we have talked about before. But it could be set up a number of different ways, but I think that, that step is where we kind of talk about those types of things, and that's where I think you start to get into a conversation about how does this impact the cost, or will it impact cost, I guess? But I think my intent going in is we'd probably try and set something up where it doesn't impact any, doesn't block the city in any financial thing, I think, because knowing some of the financial trouble that the city's been in. Depending on what you want to do, something could get expensive, but it also might not cost very much at all, it just depends on, again, the situation, and what improvements might be made, so. So with that, I don't know if I have a lot to add, but that's kind of the process that we're planning to go through. We're planning to continue with this process, like I said, we have a meeting on August twenty-seventh that kind of went over what we planned to talk about at that meeting, and then have two other meetings and draft some type of policy that we can bring for review to the council. So I don't know if there's questions, or I don't know if you had another concern, Tim, or?
Did you bring any examples of a complete street?
I didn't bring those ones, just because I wasn't sure, but I gave, and I was afraid, part of it, I was afraid, because after thinking about the presentation we gave there, I almost thought, you know, maybe this scared people to think this is going to be really expensive, but the whole intent of that was just to show, here's the type of improvements that we're talking about. I was trying to display what a bike lane could look like, or what widening sidewalks could be, or what adding street trees would look like, or things like that. And it wasn't supposed to be, every street is going to be this, or it's going to lock the city in doing this. And so I kind of reflecting on it, think that maybe it gave the wrong impression, or, but I mean, I could easily, I mean, I could probably find something or pull something out.
Well, and Zach, I would have said the same thing, I wish you would have maybe brought a visual so the other people in the council could see, because, you know, well, I think Shane has been here, and Bob, when we looked at that before, I don't know if Becky has, but, you know, we did have, and we did have that lane down on Main Street, but I think it is good for people to see what that is and what we're talking about. You know, I guess that was the other thing I thought of too, it'd be nice to have a visual on that.
Yeah, I can send examples, getting out to the council. I don't know what you're thinking, but we did some, what we tried to do in our meeting was, we tried to give some local examples, like, I don't know my direction here, but wherever Washington Street is.
Behind you.
It's got to be this, I don't know, this corner over here, I think. So we took this intersection over here right by City Hall, and really, we put in actually two different types of styles of bike lanes. We showed what it would look like with two lanes of traffic instead of four, actually it is two lanes now, but wider sidewalks, street trees, I mean, we put all kinds of stuff in there, different types of sidewalks, extended the curb line, basically made the crossing shorter for pedestrians, so. But I was a little nervous, again, like I said, I was a little nervous about showing that, because I thought maybe it gave the wrong impression that this is going to be expensive and it's going to cost the city a lot of money. And I didn't want to give that impression.
Could you just do, and I kind of agree with that, but could you just do maybe some, just showing, like how we had Main Street and having a bike lane there, and just something that would not be as expensive, but doable in our community, maybe? Yeah, because I really hope we can get something going like that, but I don't want it to be cost prohibitive either.
And one thing I jotted down, I spent like an hour taking all these presentations that I did, and I was like, how do I smash this into five or ten minutes? And then as I was going through it, I decided that I didn't like it. So maybe it's a waste of time, but I typed something up too that I wanted to mention about funding opportunities, because that was a question I think you may have had, is there funding to do these types of things? And I guess I, I don't know that I can, maybe Jim can speak to this, I'm not sure how you fund a lot of your improvements now, but it sounds like maybe funding is one of your biggest ways to do road improvements. I mean, state, state and federal, you know, road use taxes probably doesn't generate a ton of revenue or go very far at least. So, you know, you need to think about ways to leverage that, and the city has applied for, we have regional STP funding, this goes through to our organization, you get about two and a half to three million dollars a year, and then it gets divided though between cities and counties, so maybe you're looking at a million, million and a half. But, you know, incorporating the types of things that we're talking about is getting, giving the community more points when applying for that funding, so. The city's applied for that before, actually just applied this past year for Washington Street, and I talked, Steve Hartman was asking me when we put that in about, you know, how do I get more points? And that's why I try to tell them, you need to apply for these types of things, it's going to give you more points, you're going to get a better chance of being funded. So, you know, that's our program, we also have what's called transportation alternatives, which is specific to kind of bike pedestrian facilities, but you could team it together with an STP project, you do it as two separate applications, but the STP might just be the street, or the tat might be, you know, the sidewalks, the lighting, landscaping. So you can put those together, the safety funds, there may be an opportunity, potentially, depending on the project, to do some safety funds. And then Tiger Funny, that's a big national project, you'd have to come up with a big project, you know, probably have to be like several streets in downtown or something, but if you go through and look at the awards, they're usually very big projects, but they're very focused on sustainable community, livable community.
Did Dubuque get a lot of money?
I actually was looking at some things today, not specifically looking for Dubuque, but it popped up, and I think they got six million dollars.
Yeah, I thought they got.
And it was their whole project focused on complete streets of their Millwork District area. It's very competitive, and you have to have big projects, but the whole focus is on a partnership they have with HUD and EPA called the Livable Communities Initiative, so the whole focus is on creating livable communities, sustainable communities, which are really focused on kind of what complete streets are about, so. So that was one of the other things I mentioned too, that I jotted down about funding opportunities. They have this partnership between US DOT, US Housing and Urban Development, and US EPA that's focused on livable communities, so, I mean, we're really talking about the transportation stuff, but if you apply for HUD or EPA, I mean, it's all tied together, so if you're doing the complete streets development and you're talking about that in these other applications from these other funds, I mean, it's going to give you a better chance of getting some other funding sources too, so. So I did want to mention, I mean, incorporating these things into your projects is probably going to give you a stronger application for any transportation grant programs, help you leverage money, so. But if you want, I can send some pictures, I don't know who I should send it, if I just send them to the.
Council.
The council email address, or if I should send it to one person to send out, but I can send you some pictures from what we did last spring on Main Street, but then I can send some of the, I can send tons of pictures from our last presentation that has actual complete streets in other communities that show what they're like, but then I can show some of the mockups that we did, just to give a sense of what.
Hey, send a few pictures of a Chiefs birthday party too, that ought to be fun to check out while you're sending them.
Those are confidential, I think. They're involved.
Zach, if you could send just even the ones that we saw at the, at the presentation, and then they just see what a complete street is. Happy for what you've said today about developing a policy that's, that has options and not, you know, the complete picture that we saw, and that, and the nine or ten steps that you would go through to look at when considering the streets, and not creating a policy that's going to put those kind of demands on a financially struggling community, but being able to build it as, as we can, or where it makes sense, or where it's actually beneficial.
When I, I was reflecting a lot on the presentation we did, and I think I said the one thing about the pictures, maybe I should have explained that or talked more about that, but then, you know, I talked about each meeting here, I kind of glossed over some of that, just didn't, in, just because I was running overtime, I was going, I think I was, I wanted to be done in thirty minutes, I think I'd been talking for forty minutes already, so. I glossed over some of that, so maybe, you know, lost some of that in translation a little bit, but. But yeah, I mean, this is something that, if it was set up, it could be very restrictive, and it could cost us any money, but I think our intent is to do the opposite, hopefully where we consider something, but it doesn't mean that we're going to lock ourselves into anything.
Very good.
Any other questions?
I will send some pictures. Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks a lot, Zach, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Zach.
Okay, American Water Resources.
We have a five-year contract with American Water Resources that has an automatic renewal on that for an additional five years. If there is a desire from the council not to have that automatically renew, we have to provide written notification to them ninety days in advance, which would be September seventeen, somewhere in that neighborhood. With that in mind, American Water Resources has provided what's included in your packet, just some background on what they have had. We, the contract that was signed back in two thousand and ten had, for them to be able to use our customer lists that they get from the water department, it provided that they provided a compensation to the city of five percent of premiums collected for that right, and to be able to use the city's logo. They get to put my name on their letter as a sponsor of the program. As you notice in here, they're saying that they're willing to increase the percentage paid to the city of Burlington from five percent of revenues collected to ten percent. They're carrying forward the same rate structure that they currently have on the different programs they have, the water line protection, the sewer line protection, the combination of the two together, their in-home plumbing program. They're also talking about having an additional program where they put five thousand dollars per year into a side fund for non-part. non-participants, folks who can't afford to be a part of this program that could be used towards repairs of, and it'd have to be something, I, they don't have anything in here in regards to what the rules of that program would be, $5,000 when you think about the cost of a program, that's, depending on, if you're awarding full cost of reimbursement on a, a place, that could be one repair per year. But the desire there is to be able to have a fund that's set aside towards someone who does not, that can show that they can't afford the program. And the final note on what they're covering in here is just a, is that one-line statement in response to the use of customers in Burlington, they're, they will cover repairs to broken sewer lines. They sent out, or were just, just sending out, I don't know if they've done that yet or not, a letter notification in effect of, June 20th, somewhere in that neighborhood, they started covering the sewer line, broken sewer lines that weren't, that it came up in the, the issue this spring and they're, they are covering that and they're noting it and they're, as they move forward, that they will cover those broken sewer lines in the future.
So, I'm kind of fascinated by something. If I look at the numbers in the city's, the city's received about $35,000.
You can figure out how much they've claimed or made.
So they've received about $700,000 in revenue, insurance premiums, we'll just call them. And they've paid out about $150,000 in claims roughly, according to the numbers that are here. So I'm fascinated that we would, so some people are willing to do this and it's a pretty good return on the investment for them, I mean, they're, they're making some, and listen, I'm all about the whole free market, make as much as you can with it, that's fine. But they're making some pretty good jack on what they're doing. I mean, 550,000.
And that's just insurance, but can we self-insure that? Can we self-insure?
But my question, I think going forward with that is, I mean, why are we not looking at doing something and, and smidgening on, you know, another three to $5 and setting aside a fund, to fund those kinds of things for everyone who is in this?
We talked about that, that got shot down. We, we did discuss that.
Five years ago?
No, I mean, no, we discussed this, yeah, we discussed this not too long ago. That was, that was one of the issues that came up, I can't remember who, who brought that up, but that was, heck, it might have been me, I don't know, but I know that that was one of the, that was one of the deals, it's like, do we want to, this was earlier on and people were complaining about it because they saw the Burlington logo and stuff like that or whatever, that's, that's what got it started and, I always wanted to know, Timmy Scott got it started. Tim Scott said something like, well, why can't we just, you didn't like, you didn't like the program, you said, why don't we just take care of it, the city take care of it, we'll just collect the money or something like that and.
Well, the original mayor, that, my goal was for the city to accept ownership of the lateral lines, like they have the opportunity to do in the state of Missouri. It's brought before the city and they actually vote on it to add either 29 or 59 dollars to their, to their taxes. And these dollars go into making repairs in private lateral lines. And I, I don't know why the 29 or 59, but that's the limits that the state legislature put on it. And then the city takes ownership of the lines, if there's a, if there's a blockage in the line or if there's anything wrong with that line at all, they take care of it. If it's, if it's broken, if it's full of tree roots, if it's full of anything else, anything that needs to be done to it, the city takes care of it.
So, so the 29 or 59, that is paid by the homeowner on their bill?
On the taxes.
I would like to look at something like that.
We don't have that available in the state of Arlington.
But can we self-insure or anything like that?
You could take over ownership on the lines and pay all those claims, you'd have to change, adjust your sewer rates for everybody as part of that process.
But that would be the same, really, in the, it, it would be doing the same thing that Jim's talking about. But it would be cheaper for everybody.
Would the city actually set the money aside and not touch it? I mean, would they leave it set aside for those things and not, I mean, that's one of the things that you run into, is you know, they, you know, the pot of money's sitting over there and sometimes they start stretching about how they're going to utilize the funds, so.
It's similar to the solid waste, we, we collect funds for our sanitation service. You raise revenue and you're supposed to be covering your costs out of it. It's all a matter of your, you have the flexibility to, you have the flexibility now with sanitation. If you want to pull funds out of there and use it, use what you're charging for garbage to subsidize general fund activities, you certainly have the right to do that. There's, you don't have a way to limit that. The only way to limit that kind of thing is to set up a separate utility, with a separate governing board comparable to how the water department does. Then, then they have protection over the money and it can't be spent by the city for other functions.
When you're, when you're thinking about the dollars that, that, American Waters has paid out, that's a small percentage of the dollars that have been paid in this community for sewer, repair and replacement, so it's.
And really, the city didn't get very much back either, really, 5%.
Yeah, I know, I don't have an issue with that, I'm just, I mean, my point was is that I know that not everybody uses that, I don't know what, what's their number on, I could probably back the math into that, if I just figured out how much per year, but, and they, they don't really have a huge, percentage of people participate in the program, if I recall.
Stephanie, do we have anything that says?
I had that figured, but I didn't write it down, and so I.
What'd you say, the premiums were 700,000 divided by 100 and 80?
What's our, what's our deadline again on, that we have to make a call on this?
We'd have to send a letter by, it's in, in the neighborhood of September 17. I think it was about January 18 that we'd sign that contract.
I mean, the, the concern I have is that there have been some complaints, even though they're stating that they have a very favorable rating. You know, but there have been some complaints, and I think quite frankly, probably some people who don't complain, they probably just throw their hands up and say, I'm not going to deal with it, you know, they don't find it to be worthwhile and maybe on their program calling and complaining to them, I mean, sometimes, I don't want to complain to somebody, I just don't want to deal with them anymore, so.
Of course, I objected early on to the idea of the city endorsing.
It's worrisome.
Burlington letterhead and the, to me, that's not, we're not in that business.
Well, some people think they have to pay it. Some people, I think it has.
Because they could still offer this insure, this insurance in the city without us endorsing it, is that not true?
No, they can, it's just going to go to the mail just like anything else, nobody's going to pay, you know, anytime you get something with the city logo on it, you're going to open it to see what it is.
There's a.
Those people are.
Is it HomeServe that's in the community as well?
I think there is another one I've seen.
They have, there are another service that's very similar, they don't have an arrangement with us, they provide the same type of service, they have their own rules on, what coverage is and their own cost structure.
I suppose the other side is if it does go through the city, we get a smidgen of that and I suppose we have a little bit of leverage. A smidgen of leverage with them, and I said a smidgen, Bob, a small smidgen of leverage with them.
I mean, I happen to know a few people that have taken advantage of this and thought it was fantastic, so I'm not against the service. I guess bothers me though that the city shouldn't be in that business endorsing it or what have you. To me, companies have a right to come in here and sell insurance for whatever, but when we get looked, hooked into it, to me, it's just asking for problems. That's just my opinion.
I, I have to kind of lean, lean with Bob on that. I, I don't like it just because, but our, our reasoning's a little bit different, I, I don't like that, when they see that come with the letterhead and then, and Jim's endorsement, you know, that people think that it's something that they have to do. And I know, I know older people, I've got several that go to my other church, they're, they're older and if they get a bill, by God, they're going to pay it, they may not even know who the bill is too, but they're going to send a check out and to me, that, that just, just the thought of that wrenches me, it, it really does. I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'll just go ahead and bust it out since we're there and we're going to talk about it anyway. I'm done with the American Water thing, I can't, I, I just can't. I don't like it.
I would like to see some other alternatives. I would like to see some, you know, other alternatives. That could help people for less money, I guess.
Well, they've got competitors, don't they, I mean?
No, they've got no competitors, not with us, not with us to work out the deal, we've got worked with them right now, nobody else can do that.
There's another provider.
There's another provider.
There's another provider, but there's only one provider that's sending letters with the city logo on it, I mean, so they're, they're in their own ballpark, the city's, you know, we, we, said that it's okay for them to do that and I don't want to walk away from that, I know it's not a lot, still, it's 35,000 bucks that we could really use, but, at the cost of, I'm just saying, at the cost of somebody taking it the wrong way and thinking, like it has happened before, thinking that it's from the city and that they have to do this, I just got a problem with.
Me too.
I think they've been responsive when we asked them to not be as aggressive in their approach. They did tailor that back a little bit. So I mean, I would give them the benefit of noting that.
I'm not critical of, of American Water Resources, so that's, that isn't my point at all, I mean, they have every right to go out and do their business, but, but for us to endorse and be tied to it, I think is a foolish arrangement myself. I'd like to see that thing canceled and if American wants to come into Burlington and offer their services, so be it, it's a free country and good luck.
I, I agree with that, Bob, I mean, that's, that's a good point.
That's true, because actually we've got three now.
Did we just do, you just put that, you made it happen, Bob.
I didn't agree, I just said it was a good point. I agreed that it was a good point, Bob. Come on now.
If, if the council wants us to move down that road, we can, we can go ahead and process a letter saying that we want to end the contract. No, they, they will stay in the community and keep on marketing, they just won't be using us as a.
They got every right to work on this.
They will still use us through the beginning of January, but they won't after that time.
Can we do that by resolution?
Yeah.
And I will abstain, I'm, I'm not a direct, I don't deal with them directly, but I work with other companies that do.
Yeah.
And I, I would abstain from anything, any vote on it, but I, I would say that what they're offering is much better than what they were offering us before. It's, it's a little more tolerable, but it's still a long, a far cry from what I was hoping for, for, for the community and for the people. And the, the reason I brought that up was, that, when I brought this up is originally, is because, some properties, if, if you have a broken sewer, it can cost you 12 or 15 hundred dollars to repair it, your sewer's in the front yard, it's three or four feet deep. Others can cost 20 or 25 thousand dollars because their sewer is, is 20 or 22 feet deep like mine is. In, in the middle of the street in front of their house. And I know that that's a realistic number because my neighbors have both had theirs, had to repair theirs since we started requiring them to put flowable mortar in. One of them was 16,000, the other one was 20,000. And that's, that's, that's a huge amount of money for a lot of people.
And American Water doesn't cover that much, they have a cap on what they'll cover, is that not true, so you.
Right.
But we do have a lot of really old sewer lines and that's, that's the real problem.
Yeah, I mean, it's concerning, I mean, that's.
I was just on, I was, just worked on one today that out in West Burlington, that's, that's a 20-foot deep sewer and, and they're broken in the alley and, and this is the third one in the same alley that has been broken and, and that's, that's, that's a lot of dollars that could go to a lot better things than, feeding and clothing families as well, and that.
Well, I, I mean, I really think that we, if we're not going to do something like this, that we would take a look at, doing something so that the city bears, I mean, so that the.
That the funds are available?
Yeah, I mean, that's, because that's one of the concerns that you run into is that, you know, now what happens if they can't afford to do it? You know, now where do we go from here on some of these things? So that's concerning to me, because that's, then it's a health hazard potentially.
Well, what, what happens is it has to be repaired, and if it's in the right way, the city sends a letter to the individual saying, you have to make the repair, you have 30 days to do it. If you don't, the city hires a contractor and then, then it's, it's put up against the taxes on the, on the property. And it, and that doesn't get paid until the property sells or collapses itself, but.
I'd rather see us try to fund something, you know, a little bit at a time on the feeing portion of it, but you're saying, Jim, that if we do that, that, that unless we set it aside like the water company, that we, you know, that we would risk having that fund there that could be used for anything, I mean, that's one of my concerns long-term, so.
You, you can't, you can't lock the count, you can't lock future councils out from making the decision, it would do something different. I mean, you can certainly set it up though, we've, we operate a sewer fund that's, that's not out of a separate fund. We, the stormwater is essentially thrown in with it, we operate those essentially as one utility. Sanitation is operated as its own separate fund. You could set up a fund where you set up a, a fee structure for the, the laterals. I'd have to, we'd have to find out what you have to do, what we'd have to do to do it.
One, one other.
Can we look at that? I mean, I, I would like to have some more information about that, I think that might be.
I think the, the hard part will be figuring out what would you charge for a fee structure to make sure that you're collecting enough on, on individuals.
Because when I look, when I look at the numbers here, I, I could be dead wrong about this, but I think it was less than 2,000 households that were participating with American Water, when they made, when they made the last presentation, so.
It comes up about 1,000, I think.
Yeah, I thought it was too, I thought it was around 1,100, but I didn't want to say, I didn't want to say that, so I just.
Well, doesn't this give you some information to come up with a fee structure? We know the amount that they've had in.
Well, but it doesn't count the people who don't have insurance, I mean, there's some people that just private pay.
Right, but I mean, it's showing the claims per year, it kind of gives you an idea of what claims have been paid out of that.
You're going to have, we have about 9,000 accounts and you're going to have to figure out what you're charging for a, a single-family residence versus a duplex versus apartment complex, how are you going to break out those different rates?
Well, I mean, they've had, if you have 9,000, if they've had 1,000, I mean, you can kind of get an idea. I mean, it's better than nothing, you know, you at least have something you could go by, you kind of got a percentage of, of the overall that you could work with maybe to get an idea.
I mean, if, I mean, maybe, Jim, you can, this, maybe you can think about it and maybe bring, you know, we can.
Some of the other issues that you'll have to come up with, and I don't know, probably a utility person would be better to be talking about this than me. Do, are we taking on, if you have a sewer line break, if we take over those and it backs up in a basement, are we now taking on the responsibility for cleanups on those two?
So there's more liability?
Which is more, you're, you have some additional liabilities in that than what American Water has taken on and.
American, American, American Water would clean out the basement?
Nope.
I was just saying, if, if they wouldn't, why would the city have to?
If you take over ownership, if you take over ownership of that line, now you are responsible for whatever goes down it and whatever, if any damage is caused when it breaks, you're taking over liability on that.
Why, I mean, why do we have to take over ownership?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, why could, I mean.
I don't know about owning the whole, I guess I'm concerned, because is it not now that we have to go to the middle of this, you go to where you're at, hook the hook up there?
I think that's kind of how you would have to do that though, to take, to put in a fee structure and make that work. I think that's the kind of structure you're talking about doing. No one does this, so you're, you're, and I don't know whether you have the authority to go anywhere down, down this, or you, basically, the only way you can do it is to take over the lateral and essentially have a sewer fee that, that you're charging that even though it's, it's just part of the sewer fee structure.
I, I think another option is if it's working for private, maybe it could work for public and, I don't know if there's even a way to do it, but we can, we can charge a fee the same as, as what American Waters and Home Serve is doing and, provide the service the same as, as them, it's, it'd be the option of the homeowner to, to do that, it would, you know, it would be insurance, but the, I, I think the more important thing.
I don't think we should be getting into that.
I think the more important thing is that.
I prefer not to get into new businesses.
I don't think we should be in this.
I think the other thing that we need to keep in mind is that the EPA and the DNR have required that septic systems be inspected at the, the time of seller, time of transfer of property, if they don't, if they don't pass inspection, then they have to be replaced by the seller. And that, uh, and with what they're making us do in our, in our sewer separation, I don't think that it's too far behind that you're going to see that, uh, the EPA's going to require, um, individual property owners to have their sewers inspected and, uh, replaced if there's... And, and it's just not whether they're working or not, whether there's any infiltration, uh, or, uh, anything along those lines in, in the private sewer lines. I think, I, I, I think that's the, probably the next natural progression for them in, in their efforts to keep, um, waste out of the, uh, out of the stream.
I, I could be wrong, but the, doesn't the big expense really come in for homeowners when we get into that right, from the right of way into, I mean, to the city hookup? So if we simply looked at just that right of way issue into there, and that each homeowner would be responsible up to the right of way, and I don't know in Iowa, but I know in, I'm thinking in where my son lives, that the city there, they own right up to where the right of way exists, and they take, you know, that's part of their sewer fee. And I think that would, uh, I think that would bear looking at. Can we, can we separate it that far, or not, is that not possible?
Have you been in communities that had sewer line ownership that way in the, in the right of way?
I, I personally have not. Normally, you know, our, city's responsibility is at the main, and they take over getting the sewage from the home to the main or the lateral.
I think you still have the issue, if you go that route, whether it's ownership of the right of way or all the way to the house, whatever, city has taken over liability on that, and has also taken over some, to some extent, you have, you'll end up with the claims on, if there's interior damage that's done. I mean, you just have to know what, that it's, it's more than just the sewer line replacement that you end up having potential liability on.
I mean, because like where I live, I don't, I don't, the homeowner doesn't have any control over the fact that the city allows twenty thousand pound trucks to drive over where my sewer line goes.
Right, right. Now, when the city's, when the city's mains backs up into people's basements, they don't have liability now for...
Yeah.
For that. I don't know how to make any difference if it's, if the lateral. And how many claims have we paid, Chris, do you know of that?
I don't know how many they've paid. I, I've investigated this information up on SPOLOGIC, like, I don't know how many actually get paid.
It's a matter of how well we jet them. Um, if we have a good jetting program in place, we don't have that responsibility, but we can't jet this private sewer line.
Yes, most of it falls into if it's an existing issue that you knew about. If it's something we knew about and could have resolved before this happened, then if it's something you didn't know about typically, that has helped with that.
And the other part is how your, your Ju, your sewer jetting program is set up. Are you on an annual basis working your way through the system so that you're taking care of issues? If you're not taking care of issues, then you are held more culpable on those than if you're not.
That's on us, but it's not on the system.
But I don't know how, I don't know how that would work on a lateral when we're not, you can't, you just can't jet.
Actually, it helps on even whole systems. If, if you have a, a schedule in place, if you have enough people and enough resources to have somebody cleaning sewers on a, a scheduled basis, it does help when the insurance companies look at stuff.
I think that's a great idea.
Well, I certainly would be in favor of looking at that right of way into the public area and seeing about if we can do something about... I don't want, I don't want the city to be responsible once it gets into the person's private yard. I mean, that's their issue, but certainly it's very irritating that city can't take care of it from the, in the right of way to the center of the street or wherever the hookup is.
That can go three hundred feet.
Well, I mean, but, you know, the homeowner has no, you know, no way of protecting themselves what goes on in that area, so...
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of differences of, uh, Becky's backyard, she's...
You have some, some lines of that, you've had a, somebody who's built a home that's on, on a lateral that is, that can be a block off of a sewer main. And they, when it was built, you're, you kind of have that liability that you've taken that on to have built that far away from where infrastructure is in place. You, you are gonna be taken, if you look at that, you do take on a lot of liability.
And also, if a pipe is, is laid properly, embedded properly, the engineering specifications, it doesn't matter what the weight of that truck is running down the road, it does not affect the sewer pipes.
It's hard to believe when it always breaks out in the middle of the road, though.
Well, that's true. It's a lot of ifs, I mean...
Typically, typically those sewer laterals are breaking where the, the flat part runs out, and it starts to turn and drop to the sewer. And typically, that's where it is, is out the right of way. That's typically when a pipe fails, not always, but typically is where it turns down and heads down. That's usually where you find the breaks and the separations.
That or where the, comes down to the bottom and goes into the, into the bend.
Yeah, the same thing with that weight of the up and down pipe rather than flat pipe.
And there's no, on clay, and most of the sewers around here are clay, they just don't, there just wasn't anything there to, to make a natural bend.
Getting back to the issue here of American Water, whatever it is, I think, Tim, you suggest we come up with a resolution, uh, and then vote on it. Do we want to terminate the agreement?
I think it should be a resolution to, to continue.
It would be red...
Then if you voted down, then it's...
No, you'd want a resolution to term, to terminate, because it's set to, it's automatically renewable.
And I'll vote yes.
Automatic, okay, yeah.
You'll abstain, right, Tim?
Yeah, I'll have to.
Good point, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Well said. All right. Let's keep it rocking. Uh, Big Chief, you want to come on up, uh, and address the curfew and whatnot?
I need to make some notes here as we go through this. Good luck.
Thank you.
Look at this. Thousand two hundred, thank God.
Hi, sir.
Stewards long, it's kind of...
Seems like the list is getting shorter, though. The, the list is getting shorter, I realize, though. People are getting out there.
Good evening.
Hello, Chief.
With the, uh, recent incidents, and we're gonna have to go back now to the Fourth, Fifty July, on specifically Maple Street, the question came up from, uh, well, Tim originally, and then Becky also talked to me about it later, about possibly bringing forward, or at least having a discussion about our current curfew, and maybe some changes we want to make. So as we go through this, what I've, I've taken the time to look at all of our comparable cities and compare it to what we're doing, and then at the end, maybe have some discussion on what you're thinking, or what we can maybe do to change some things to, to have some improvement. So here's the other cities I looked at. I want to just go through these in order. And there's our current restrictions. And as I look through these, I'm pretty confident that our restrictions are the most liberal restrictions of any of the cities that I looked at. But there's our current restrictions. For persons seventeen and under, when school is in session the next day, eleven to five. Well, what I found is, is you, you didn't really think about it that way, but when school is in session, well, that means the whole summer you can be out from twelve-thirty to five. And I mean, really, when you break that down, that's quite a bit for a ten-year-old, twelve-year-old, thirteen-year-old that could be out till twelve-thirty at night. So, then we have a little bit of parent accountability built into our curfew, but it's, I think, it just in asking, and from my recollection, because I could find no record, but I think there were a couple parents cited over the course, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but I think Stan Raub brought this ordinance forward, and about that timeframe, it would have been the mid-nineties, I think, approximately.
Yeah, it was, uh, yeah, but it was Wendell Patterson.
Okay, it could have been even Wendell, huh? That would have been back in the eighties or late eighties, because he left in whatever, ninety, ninety-one.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. No, it would have been, it would have been Stan, yeah, yeah, it would have been Stan.
But anyway, the parent accountability is three, basically three offenses in the same night. Well, I mean, if you pick up a kid at eleven o'clock, and you're gonna have to pick him up again at eleven-thirty, twelve, so basically, I don't think our ordinance really has any teeth in it at all for parent accountability. But a lot of us will remember when, when they brought this ordinance forward. It was, it was quite a battle, and I think that maybe that's why it was as lenient as it is, because they really had trouble. I don't know what the boat was, but I do remember, even as a young officer on the department, all of the controversy that surrounded this curfew ordinance, so... And as I've done some online research, I mean, I think even any restrictions we move forward with, there's, there's gonna be some controversy. It seems like there's a lot of controversy when it surrounds curfew and curfew ordinances, so... Anyway, Moon Ford, there's a Clinton. They break it out a little bit by age and by time of day. So fourteen years at the following time, Sunday through Thursday, ten PM to six AM, and then basically the weekend, eleven PM to six AM. And then no minor between those ages, and they give you a little bit of leniency there from midnight to six. So that's a, that's still fairly lenient to a degree, but it's far more restrictive than what we have. And there's no apparent accountability built into their ordinance. And Atomo was the simplest ordinance I came across, and they just addressed it at sixteen years and younger. You can't be in a public place between eleven and six, period. Doesn't matter what day of the week, or, that's just pretty simple. No parent accountability there either. Bettendorf, fairly similar to ours, except for, again, they break it out by a little bit of age and time of day, but even on the weekends there, you can see they go from twelve to five, and ours is twelve-thirty. So it's a little bit closer to ours, and no apparent accountability. Musketeen, and there's a caveat to this. Currently, Musketeen's addressing their curfew ordinance. I, I don't know if they thought it was too restrictive, but as I talked to the chief up there, they're getting ready to move forward with some changes, and it sounded like to be a little bit more lenient, but that's just in the beginning stages of their process, so... But currently, this is what they have on the books, so, I mean, this is probably one of the more restrictive ordinances that I came across. But under fifteen years of age, it's nine-thirty to six, and fourteen to eighteen, eleven to six. And they do have a little bit of accountability that they put into their ordinance. But as I talked to Amy Beavers about this, because we have some of this language in our ordinance, but the problem with this language is, is allow to permit. Allow to permit, well, that's a lot. That's awful tough to show, that you are actually allowing this to permit. Versus, well, I, yeah, I should have checked, but I didn't, they must have snuck out the window. And so the kind of, again, that makes it really difficult to enforce that part of the parent accountability in the ordinance. Marshalltown, I mean, kind of similar to Musketeen, almost. It's just not quite as restrictive, but fifteen and under, or under age of fifteen, I should say, ten to six. And then minors under eighteen, eleven to six. But again, they didn't break out any weekends or school nights, or, that's the way it is every night. And they did build a little bit more teeth into their ordinance. It, it had the same language as Musketeen, allowing to permit, but then they go on and spell it out a little bit, which I kind of liked. It's no defense that you did not have knowledge of a minor's presence in a public place after curfew. That's not a defense. It doesn't matter, basically. The parent's gonna be held responsible, just like the kid. I mean, or that's the way I read the ordinance. If your kid's out past curfew, you're held accountable for it. So then we're kind of this part, you know, ideas, suggestions, discussing. I mean, it's kind of, it's, it's up to the council on some, maybe recommendations on kind of what you'd like to see. At that point, I can kind of maybe begin to put some language together for an ordinance. Like I said, I sat down with Amy for a couple hours, and we kind of talked to her about some of the suggestions that had been made by council, and to see if, if we had any limitations on what we could and couldn't do. You know, for the most part, I think that she was pretty good with making, for, as far as restrictions, whatever changes you guys would like to make. We talked about the parent accountability and the Marshalltown ordinance, and, and then I had a staff member say, well, why don't we just simplify all that, and, and you could turn this to two offenses, three offenses, but basically after the third or subsequent offense. And that doesn't mean the same night. That means from the time your kid is a minor until your time your kid's an adult. Anytime after that third offense, you're gonna have the same accountability as he has, or she has. So, you know, you go, well, three's quite a bit. Well, not if your kid's twelve and gets his first curfew ticket. I mean, you basically got five years to go. So, I don't know. I kind of thought that staff member was kind of a, kind of a good idea. It, it provides the parent with a chance to correct the issue before they get a ticket, but at the same time, it's gonna hold them accountable to these kids that habitually offend the ordinance as well. So, I thought that was kind of a good idea.
Getting a ticket means a fine of some kind.
Yeah, yeah, they end up going to traffic court is where they go. It's a simple misdemeanor. But it doesn't go through the juvenile court. It actually goes through adult court and traffic court. That's where curfew's just a little bit different than, I mean, the code is very specific where juveniles go for certain offenses, but curfew is an exception to that. They actually do go to traffic court. I mean, and, and so then that begs the question, well, what's that really gonna do for the police department? You know, I think it'd be extremely difficult to sit here and say that, well, we know that this is gonna reduce crime. I mean, there's a lot of statistical data out there that says it does, but there's a lot that says it doesn't. And until we actually change it and do something and try to start making some comparisons, you know, I don't know if we can sit here and say that, but this is what we can sit here and say, it's gonna reduce our calls for service. Because at twelve-thirty, the streets clean up. I mean, they know it's curfew time, and they know if they're out, they're gonna get a ticket. And so it does, I'm confident it'll, it will reduce some of our calls for service, about kids maybe being loud in the neighborhood, or kids vandalize this or that, whatever. I mean, I'm confident of that. But is it actually, you know, two years from now, are we gonna go back and go, hey, we dropped vandalism by five percent? Or criminal mischief or burglaries? I don't know. I sure can't sit here and say that, because I don't have anything to compare it to.
And this, this curfew ordinance does not prohibit children from being out. It prohibits them from being out without adult supervision.
Yeah, I mean, the exceptions, there's a lot of exceptions, but that's basically it. If they're supervised, or if they're going directly from work, school activities, an event that was sponsored and supervised by adults, and they don't make any detours or stops, and they go straight home. I mean, there's, there is a lot of exceptions, and it talks also about, you know, free speech and some other things that they could do.
Because, I mean, under federal labor law, if your child is not sixteen, they cannot work past seven PM. So, to me, ten o'clock is pretty generous. I mean, to, to not have adult supervision for children that are, that are under sixteen.
See, I thought, I thought that was a little tough. I thought maybe it should be for the under eighteen, but, uh, six, sixteen to eighteen, midnight, uh, but...
I don't, I mean, oh, I wanted it to be, I wanted the one to be nine, nine o'clock. Actually, Chief was the one that got all willy-nilly on the deal on it. I mean, really, what, what do kids under fourteen, you know, what are they doing without parent supervision under, you know, at ten, you know, nine o'clock at night?
It's summertime. They're trying to stay out as long as they can, and...
But that's fine, but where are the parents? This is the problem. We have been asked to parent these children. So the city council's been asked to do something, so you know what? If they're not gonna parent, we will parent via, via curfew.
That's how the original one came about. We had kids that were, that were eight, nine years old, walking across Sixth Street Bridge at three o'clock in the morning one morning. This was when I was a reserve officer, and that's why this, why the thing came up. Talking with Gary Thomas and, and Dawn Henry, um, when we first got on council, was, I, I, when I looked at the officer and said, aren't you going to do anything about this? He said, what can I do? There's nothing, there's, they're not, it's not illegal for them to be out at this time. Right, there were, there were eight kids, and they raised from eight to thirteen. And there was nobody supervising. When we asked each one of them, does your mom know you're out here? Does your dad know you're out here? Some of them said, yeah. Other ones said, no. I doubt that any of the parents actually knew that the kids were out, but...
Three in the morning, actually.
There, there, there was nothing to be done. And it wasn't, probably fifteen or twenty minutes later, a bad storm blew up, blew up, and all the lights in the downtown area went out. There was, there, there were no lights. I, I was scared to death for these kids. Were they, did, did they go home? Did they get home? And what were they doing out at that time of night, anyway? And that wasn't, that, that was the example that I explained over and over, over again, when we're talking about the curfew ordinance. But, but there were many more examples where we encountered juveniles after midnight and involved in, in activities that they shouldn't be. There was, there were a group of sixteen, fifteen and sixteen-year-olds that stole a car and ran it into the side of the house during, during Halloween. And it was like at two o'clock in the morning, and they thought, well, you know, what are you doing out at that time of night? It just, just didn't make any sense. For whatever reason, this was on AOL, the, uh, the next day after the July fourth, or it was a couple days, I guess, after July fourth. The, uh, the next day after the July fourth, or it was a couple days, I guess, after July fourth. And, and I just picked it up. The city of Baltimore is, uh, about to enact the toughest curfew ordinance in the, in the country. And it, and it was because the police were finding kids, children riding their bicycles across town at three o'clock in the morning. They have a terrible crime problem there. And they said, uh, that what, what they're gonna pass is any youth under the, under fourteen will not be allowed outside their homes after nine PM year round, seven days a week.
I sent you a link on that one.
That, that, that's pretty restrictive. If you're fourteen to sixteen year old, the, the ban will be, uh, from being outside on school nights after ten PM or other nights after eleven PM. That doesn't mean, you can't be outside at all. Here, here's the other thing, is, uh, uh, they can take the violators to curfew centers. And where their parents, uh, have access to social services, but the parents will have to take city-approved council cap classes or could face a five hundred dollar fine for, uh, for repeat violations up from the previous three hundred dollar. So there's, there's others that are, that are taking.
I sent you a link today.
Taking a tougher approach on that.
It went into effect, this, it went into effect.
Couple days ago.
Yeah, a couple days ago.
I think Detroit's doing the same thing, real similar. I know that they were talking about having some centers actually where they could. But, I mean, that's a little different scale than what we're doing. You're talking about kids that they might not be able to find their parents and they have to find a safe place for them. You know, so. I mean, in our repeat offenders, we have repeat offenders, but I think some of that, at that level's far beyond. I mean, our repeat offenders would be a handful. But, you know, they need to be dealt with one way or the other. Their parents need to be dealt with and held responsible.
Would you say our curfew is working?
Yeah. Yeah, as a patrolman, I can tell you this much, councilman, as a patrolman, it was one of the best things that happened to us as officers. At least then at twelve thirty, we had a way to start to eliminate those calls for service. Cause like Councilman Scott said, you'll get a call on a ten-year-old at an intersection, there's nothing you can do and it's not twenty minutes later and you get another call and another call. You know, it did, it was a big benefit to us out working the streets, you know? I mean, I just, I statistically can't show you what it has done for per se, incident reports or crime reports.
But basically it's working.
Yeah, the, I know the officers, it's, when I talk to them about Maple Street and the things that are going on up there at that time of the night. I mean, all of them say the same thing. Well, after twelve thirty, it's, it's over.
On school nights, would you be in favor of fourteen and under at nine o'clock?
I'd be in favor of what this council wants to do because whatever ordinance you pass.
I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that down just, just a hair. I mean, I just think that.
I mean, I hadn't really thought about the school night thing until this all really started to come to light and it kinda, it's like a, a light comes on, you know, it's like, well, school night, well, shoot, that's the whole summer. You know, when you think about it, that's the whole summer that they're out till twelve thirty. And I, I hadn't processed it in that way before. And so I started looking at some of the things other cities were doing.
And this is not going, I mean, you know, I think some of the parents are gonna say, well, and they're gonna say a lot of things, but I think for the, the parents who are doing the right thing and they're parenting their children, I don't think it's gonna be worrisome because they're gonna be with their children or they're gonna have knowledge or.
Or they're gonna want their kids home anyways. It's a decent time.
And so I think, you know, when, when you look at some of the other things, I mean, DHS steps in and a lot of times when families can't monitor or control children that are eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve, kind of on different situations.
Sure.
But, you know, if you kinda take a little leap of that and say, you know, why don't we have something in place to stop this? I mean, an eight-year-old child should not be out wandering the streets at ten o'clock or eleven o'clock at night.
Yeah, no question. I mean, in a case like that, they would definitely get a copy of the report, I mean, for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, at some point that becomes, even there's a code to cover some of that. I mean, it's child endangerment. At some point, you definitely, at, at a certain age, common sense is gonna tell you, we can't have this. This, you're not being responsible.
But, you know, I, as, like, as I said, I always impo, I always point to the employment laws. I mean, if you're fourteen and fifteen-year-old, you can't work past seven o'clock. So if you can't work past seven, somebody somewhere said, you're not able to do this past seven PM. Why should you be out wandering pa, much past that? So, I, I feel comfortable in moving forward with something on it. And I would encourage a little tougher on that. Fourteen and under. I, I understand the fifteen, sixteen-year-old kids. I mean, I understand they're getting, or they wanna do a little bit more at night, be a little more independent, but you know, fourteen's pretty young.
I, I, I agree, Becky. I, I think, uh, nine o'clock would be great on school nights and ten o'clock any other night for fourteen and under. There's not, there's, there's nothing to do that, I mean, that, at that time, when they're not accompanied by a parent anyway. And, 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 uh, seventeen and under is, I, I, I don't know why they need to be out past eleven o'clock unsupervised. Running the streets.
And as, I think Chief pointed out, there's plenty of, uh, you know, if they're coming home from work, if they work at, you know, Wendy's or McDonald's and they're coming home from work, that's an excuse, you know, there's, that's reasonable. I think that's very reasonable.
Yep.
But I mean, just to be wandering around. And I like the part where we're trying to do something to address, to bring the parents into the foray in, when the, when they're having difficulties with the child or, you know.
Well, and I, I thought about that today after I looked at that curfew center thing and I, I think like Young House and there's some places that, that have parenting type classes. I don't know that, but I'd assume maybe, you know, Jim, that. I could check into that, but find a place that, that does that and, and we send a letter to the parents. If we take the child home, we'd hand-deliver the letter. But if we don't take the child home, let's say it's sixteen, seventeen-year-old, then we send a letter to the parents to make sure that they've been notified that their child got a curfew ticket, but we could find a service that maybe provides that and put that pamphlet with our letters. Or if we take the kid home, give them a pamphlet and highlight that part that, hey, you can take some classes. There are some resources. There's some people out there that'll help you with this.
Can we give that information to the services and ask the services to be, or just even to provide some support that way, or is that not appropriate?
I don't know if that's appropriate for us. I mean, we're not into the punishment portion of any of this, so. And not that that should be considered punishment, but I think that it would be viewed that way.
Can we make a referral to them? I mean, should each one be referred to them?
Yeah, I think it's no different than when we make referrals to the battered women's shelter or, you know, like I said, find a service that does provide that and at least get the information out there that it's available. I don't think there's any problem with that. So Tim, if I got this right, fourteen and under on school nights, nine PM, non-school nights, ten PM? And then what was the suggestion for fourteen through seventeen?
Eleven, uh.
Fifteen, basically.
Seven days a week.
I'm sorry?
Eleven, seven days a week.
Okay, okay.
And that was for what age?
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. And again, I mean, maybe, maybe when you bring, well, of course, the exceptions will be in there when, when it's brought forward.
Yeah. Yeah, you can, you could go look at the ordinance now and you can see all the exceptions. There, there really, it's a really, really well-written ordinance. As I looked at these other comparable cities, I thought they really did a good job. I mean, that, that, the, uh, exceptions are clearly defined in there. And that's, it's a good ordinance. It's just a matter of if we need to make some amendments or if you'd like to.
I, I, I would like to see more parent accountability.
Okay.
I'm probably more restrictive than what anybody else would wanna be, but I, I just, I, I, I think that's the answer to
Yeah, I agree.
Majority of the problems is, is lack of parenting responsibility. If you you can control your kids, if you have no desire to, then, uh, then they need to understand that that's not the right.
Sure.
Attitude.
Well, I personally really like the subsequent offense language. I can bring that forward. It's just a matter of two or three, you tell me.
And then, then what happens? Are cited, same as a, as a curfew violation?
Absolutely. Yep, be the same exact violation as the child. And then at, at some point, I would assume the court would, you know, they make referrals to everything else and I don't know why they couldn't make a referral for this as well.
Can we make it?
I mean, that's up to our judges, but.
I mean, can we make it within a period of time? I mean.
Well, I was wondering that too, like a year, three and a year.
I mean, cause kids are.
You can, but that, just so you know, that becomes very difficult for us to keep track of.
Okay.
That's hard for us than the police. I mean, now we gotta figure out what was the date and when were they cited. I mean, just, the third and subsequent is pretty simple. We just look through the convictions and if you got three convictions, well.
And really, you're not gonna use this unless people are kinda out where they shouldn't be and doing things. I mean, if somebody's driving in a car between places and things, they're not gonna be a problem.
Oh, there'd be an exception for that. I mean, it's a legitimate exception. But, I mean, we don't now. So I don't know if, just cause we make some changes. I mean, the bottom line is, is the curfew gets enforced for kids just walking around the streets. I mean, that's the bottom line. I'm not saying there's not cars get stopped at one thirty in the morning and have four kids in it and they don't get tickets. That happens, but I mean, primarily it's, you know, you see a group of kids walking down the street at one in the morning and it gives us some leverage to get them off the streets.
And I repeat, I want you to, the curfew ordinance that we have is working quite well.
Yes.
Why are we wanting to fuss with it?
Well, because it is working so well that we want it to work better. Why, because he said everybody's off the street at twelve thirty. We want them off the street earlier.
Well, I think the community, Bob has, I think of the voices in the community have, have asked the council to start doing some things to address the safety concerns and, and, and I think this is one way we can address it by allowing, freeing up the officer's time. Instead of having to round up the children at twelve thirty, we'll be rounding them up at nine, ten, eleven, so, a little earlier. So that frees up resources to use for, uh, important things after that. Yeah, well, there you go.
Shootings and stuff.
Exactly.
That's what I'm concerned about. Curfews, okay.
Well, but you have to address, I think, some of the other, I think this is a way of addressing some of the time constraints that they have to.
I don't agree with that at all, but that's all right.
Chief, what else, what else can we do to help you, uh, take care of the problems that we've been having lately?
You, you wanna talk about that now or get through the rest of the items and clean it up at the end or, I mean, I'd be happy if that, whatever you vote on it.
Uh, just go ahead and bring it to us right now, Chief.
Had to make some love, that's the bad part. There's enough going on, had to make notes.
Shane, what'd you think about those times? Do you think they're too restrictive or?
I do, personally, I do.
But there's a lot of exceptions to those.
I was seventeen and handling my own business and I'm telling you, I didn't need anybody following me around or anything, but, you know, when it was time to get home, I did. I know everybody's not the same, but I
That's when your mom.
I used to jump in from twelve thirty to, I'd be cool at eleven, but, I don't know.
That's when it was legal for your mother to beat you.
I don't, well, I, I still whupped all my kids. Uh, I never got arrested for that.
Well, but it is, I mean, if we're gonna start to spend some money to put together some amendments and an ordinance, I guess I don't wanna put something together that. I know you can't vote, but I need to get a feel for how, what you want me to bring forward, if anything.
Oh, oh, I want the earlier times brought forward.
Well, for the fourteen and under, I like the nine PM too, because that's really young. That's just right out of middle school. I mean, you know, I think, and under, so.
I think there's enough exception, I mean, the exceptions that are in there now, I think there's enough exceptions that are in there to cover the eleven o'clock. I mean, if you're coming home from a school event, if you're coming home from a whatever, I mean, you know, but, you know, if you're just joyriding around town and it's twelve thirty in the morning or twelve, midnight or so, I mean.
Well, I think what we're doing too is saying, is saying what the parents should say, be home at a reasonable time and parents aren't saying that.
Right.
I mean, it's bad that we have to say that, legally say that, but, you know, we should, a parent should say, you gotta be home at this time. And if they aren't, then I guess we have to.
Well, I think we need to reiterate, this is just a, maybe a small piece of the puzzle too.
Right.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of things at play, but, but at the same time, you know, in policing and Jim's kinda familiar with this and Tim might be, but, you know, the broken windows theory and I mean, it's, it's a theory that I believe in. And it all starts with these very, very little minor things and these minor offenses that just build and build and build to a situation that gets out of control, so. I mean, there's something to be said for that as well. And is, is this piece of that helping, you know? Yeah, it could. It could help down the line, somewhere down the line. It's, you know, the theory's all about a car in a neighborhood and if you just leave that car sit there, it might sit there for a while, but now go flatten one of the tires, now go break out one of the windows. Well, I'm here to tell you, in about a week, every window will be broken out and every tire will be taken off and there won't be anything left. Well, that's kinda the broken window theory if you look at it from a real broad, big perspective. You know, if you're letting graffiti show up all over town or, you know, abandoned buildings over town. I mean, pretty soon you just, a criminal then gets the feeling that, well, nothing's being done about this. I'll just commit this crime. And so, I mean, as I have studied policing in depth for years and years, I think there's some validity to that theory. And it's taking care of the small things. Don't let things get big and out of control, but that's, that's just a theory.
Well, Rudy, Rudy Giuliani, uh, had that theory too. And, and one of the biggest complaints that New York City had was these people standing on street corners and they'd spit on your windows and then they'd use some Windex and, and, and old newspaper to clean off the window and then, and, and then they would hit you up to be paid for, for cleaning off the, the grain that they put on it. And, uh, and, and nothing was being done. And Rudy Giuliani said, we won't have this anymore. And he got it stopped and the rest of the crimes started to come down and, and New York City became a much friendlier, friendlier city. Now it's starting to go back because there's, they've got a, a new, more liberal mayor and he's saying, no, that's okay. Um, that's the, that's the politics of it, but the, the facts are, just like you said, the crime did go down because Rudy Giuliani chose to go after the petty crime.
Yeah, I think, you know, all those little things are just small little pieces of the puzzle, but they need to be discussed because I think there's, there's some validity in that, so. Anyway, just, let me kinda give you an update of what's going on here. I wanna talk first about Eddie Martin or Eddie Lover that we all knew him so well by, Etten and Gunnison. And the first thing I wanna say is about a year ago, that neighborhood took out a special events permit. And they took out that per, permit to get together, to have a, let's get to know your neighbor party and they blocked off the streets up there and they did that. And that had a, an incredible impact on this case. I mean, when that started to happen up there and we talked to, oh, maybe fifteen different neighbors that happened to be up there in the area. And I said this on the radio show and I wanna say it again, they didn't go running in their houses, they come running out of their houses. And without that timely information, this could've really been difficult. I mean, even just in a matter of hours, they'd already gotten rid of the car and were already planning on leaving town. So, I mean, I wanna shout out to that neighborhood what they did and what they, how they came together and made that work. Because without that information, like I said, I don't know where this case ends up, so. Good for them, good deal for them. That, that case is coming together, you know, there's a lot of details I'd really like to share with you that I can't, that, that would kinda really be important to this discussion, but at the same time, we're not gonna do anything to risk this guy ending up where he needs to end up and, at least in my opinion. And that's to never be on our streets again anywhere or anybody's streets for that matter. But, when you wanna talk about crime prevention and we're, we're gonna talk about all these things and this is just another little piece of this. I mean, we had an officer that was talking to Eddie within minutes before he got shot. They were just down over the hill and around the corner because everybody at the police department knew Eddie. I mean, I talked to him the day before up on Maple Street, stopped and talked to him. Everybody knew Eddie. He rode his bike around. He'd always stop and talk to you. Well, one of our patrol officers was talking to Eddie. And it was around summer in Maple, May in Maple, that area. Well, Eddie went on his way. He went on west, we're assuming, on Maple and then turned up Gunnison and went north. Well, the officer went on his way. And he no more than got down there and went up the street and it happened. So, I mean, was that squad car visible right there on Gunnison? No. But the point being is there was a squad car within a few blocks of that happening, so. I just want you to keep that in mind as it goes through. I mean, some of these things, no matter what we do, we can't prevent. But I think we can do some things here that are gonna be a better deterrent to an overall picture of what's going on. I just wanna make that clear. I don't even know if I'd have had, not I, if anybody would've had fifty patrolmen on the streets that day. I don't know if that would've been prevented, if you will, unless somebody just happened to be sitting at Etten and Gunnison. Well, then it could've happened at Higby and Angular.
Yeah.
You know, so just keep that in mind as we go through this discussion. But shout out to the neighbors. Same time, I wanna say the same thing for Tammy. You know, so just keep that in mind as we go through this discussion. But shout out to the neighbors. Same time, I wanna say the same thing for Tammy King. She put together a thing at Indian Terrace this weekend on Sunday. Had about fifty or sixty people show up there that weren't even from that neighborhood, but wanted to talk to her about what she's doing in that neighborhood. And today, I think Major Grimshaw, he takes those calls for us. I think he probably fielded ten or fifteen calls today about wanting to do something, to put a program together. Kudos to Tammy. That's all I can say. Kudos to her. I mean, we have done in twenty years, I don't know how many presentations on Neighborhood Watch, and these are some things we can do. Well, until crime affects you, it doesn't affect you. That's the bottom line. It just doesn't. But when it does, or when it's close, or it's close to a family member, you get interested and you get interested in a hurry. So, I mean, we got some really, really good momentum going in, in that direction right now. So shout out to Tammy and, and everybody else that's been involved in Neighborhood Watch, but currently she's doing a great job with that. Uh, let's talk about the weekend a little bit. That crime spree, I'll call it if you will. Those two guys are from Miami, Florida. They've been up here for less than three months. As a matter of fact, one of them's been here for three weeks and one of them's been here for about a month and a half. And it's something that we, as a community, are gonna have to deal with. And what I'm getting at is, is there's a huge influx, at least for our little community, of transient workers. And I don't know if you followed the Paul Miller Park thing in Lee County, that shooting that just happened down there, that was a transient worker. These two guys are transient. That doesn't have anything to do with all transient workers are bad. That's not my point at all. But it is my point that on the weekends, we got two or three thousand people maybe wanting to have a beer in our town that we didn't used to have. And I think that this is gonna kinda continue for a while. I hope it does. I mean, I don't hope crime does, but I sure hope development continues and, and all those great things that are going on. But you know, when we talk about all this development and these things coming, you know, if I'd have come to you two years ago and go, hey, what we got going on is a great thing, but we're gonna really have an influx in our population and a very small percentage of them, you can drive data anywhere you wanna drive it, and a small percentage of them are gonna be criminals. No matter what pool you draw from, it doesn't matter if it's bankers, I don't care where you go, a percentage of them are gonna be that way.
True.
So if I'd have come to you a year and a half ago going, hey, we got three thousand people coming to our area, we need some more help, you know, I don't know if that gets very far. So anyway, again, as we discuss this and as this goes along, that's something that we as a community need to think about and stay prepared. I mean, cause if, if more things start to develop and more workers come, which I hope it does, just keep in mind that that does affect public safety. It does affect public safety. And I don't care if you're talking about shootings, traffic accidents. I mean, when you get that many more people in town, a percentage, I can show you, our incidents are gonna go up. Okay? So with that, you have a mindset of some people that come from very large cities, and whether they get away with this crime or not, I don't know, but what they do think is, is they can walk in here, nobody knows me. And I can just basically do what I want because I'm gonna pack my bags and leave. And that's exactly what was going on when we got to Howard Johnson's. They were on their way. So, I mean, that's another thing that we're dealing with. And as we move through this and we try to address how we're gonna deal with it, again, just keep that in mind. That's something that's, you gotta, a mindset of people that don't apply social norms like we do. They just don't apply that. But again, Fun City Parking Lot, the best security in town, the best security in town. They have security officers, they have cameras. They provide us with untold amounts of support when we go out there. And we're there most every Friday and Saturday night at closing time, or try to be. If we got people available, we go there to be there. Didn't matter to these two guys. Didn't matter a bit. Again, unless you had somebody sitting right in that parking lot or sitting right over there on Hayes Street. And again, that has turned out to be one of our best neighborhoods we have. I mean, they have unbelievable security in there. And I, I can't go into the details of how that security's really gonna help us in this case, but it's really, really gonna help us. But they didn't care. They didn't care. So keep that in mind as we talk about prevention and how we can maybe provide a deterrent. Okay? Uh, Elmer Donaldson thing, just briefly, it's a long time, ongoing feud. Local people, I know Shane's very familiar with both families, you know? Again, is that, is that thing per se preventable? I think if somebody happened to be right there, maybe. I mean, there, this thing's gone on, this feud's gone on for a long time. So I think we can, again, provide a deterrent. I wanna get to that, but I, I just, I wish I could stand up here and say that forty more policemen would have prevented all these things. And I don't know if they would have prevented that specific incident, but maybe it could provide a deterrent that collectively would stop some of these incidents, if that makes sense. So here's some ideas, and, and we've talked about this in the department, we've talked about this actually for the last two years since I've been the chief of the department. And with all the cuts that have gone on and kinda how, how do we do, deal with this? Because the bottom line is, is we have to get the city on stable financial footing. I, I realize that. I get that. There's no question about that. And I'm all about that. I, I don't think you've ever heard me complain. I don't think you've ever heard a policeman complain. And maybe to a fault, because we're not gonna complain. We are absolutely gonna go do with what we got and never say a word. If you wanna walk through the building anytime soon, again, I'm not complaining, but we just go about our business and we just deal with it. So, one position that we lost was a civilian in our evidence room. And that evidence room takes an investigator about eighty percent of his time. And it's all with subpoenas and public information requests. I mean, these body cameras are great and these car cameras are great and nine one ones all recorded, all that stuff's great, but then we have to provide all that data to the case. Almost any case, an O W I case, a traffic accident. So about eighty percent of their time every day, they're spending in there doing DVDs, whatever it takes to provide the data for these cases and processing all of our evidence, which here lately has been a lot. I mean, that evidence ha, through the chain of custody, I mean, it has to be properly prepared, it has to be properly labeled, it has to be scanned in and then stored, so you can obviously find it if you need it again. But anyway, we had a civilian doing that. Well, I mean, with cuts and the things that have come along, we, we just manned that. We found a way to man that. So if we did have a civilian doing that, it would free up a position to be investigating cases instead of sitting in there making DVDs. But again, that's, that's money, you know, to the tune of, I don't know what it would take. I, you know, to get a good person, I think, you know, it's a substantial amount of money, forty-five, fifty thousand, I don't know. And that's just wages. Doesn't include benefits and all. But it's an idea. It's a suggestion. Reserve officers. I mean, that's something that we are gonna pursue because it's something that, it's not an ongoing expense. It's a fairly large investment to start, but then we don't have the personnel costs associated with that. So Stephanie, she's been gracious enough to talk to the Crime Stopper Board. They're gonna meet again and discuss maybe if they can help us with funding at least the purchase of some equipment. I mean, it's about five thousand dollars or close. I mean, by the time you get a gun and a vest and a taser and the leather and the uniforms and name tags and, believe it or not, it comes up to almost five thousand dollars. So you know, if we can come up with ten thousand dollars to start with a couple, it's a place to start. And plus, I couldn't bring on six or seven at once anyway, cause I can't train them. We don't have enough personnel to train them. This is gonna have to be phased in, like two at a time. You know, until we get a six or eight man unit, I think that that could really be helpful, really, really helpful. I mean, back in the day, a reserve just rode with a regular officer, and that's helpful. But I think if we get the right people with the right training and put two of them together, we can get them out in a car. And then maybe we can take care of the vandalism's or some of these calls that they maybe wouldn't be as critical or that you know is gonna lead to an arrest. You already know it before you go there. So that frees up these five or six guys to maybe patrol, to be where they need to be as a deterrent. About eighty percent of our time, seventy-five to eighty percent, it varies, is spent on calls for service. We do nothing, in my opinion, proactively on the police department. Our S R O program is as close as we get, where we can get to those kids. This fall, we're gonna get one in the middle school. You're gonna see an impact from that. You, you are gonna see rapport being built that's never been built before. But that's the only thing we do proactively. We don't have the time. We absolutely, I shared with the mayor, the weekend report, I usually try not to bother you with that, but I wanted you to know on top of everything else that went on, that's what we dealt with. And I'm telling you, for five or six guys, that is an unbelievable responsibility to get that done. You know, we can't say, not throwing stones, but we can't say we had a flood and we couldn't get to this, this, or this. We can't say that. We're gonna get to it one way or the other. That's the bottom line. So anyway, reserves I think are a possibility. I think it's, it would be helpful and it's something we could, we could afford. Maple Street, I wanna go back to that, cause we've hired overtime every weekend since the incident. And I haven't counted, but I don't know how many times those shift supervisors have come up to me and thanked me for that. That we had two additional officers to deal with the neighborhood and our other four, five, or six, whatever we had that night, could go deal with the calls for service. And now what's followed that are their citizens coming out, talking to the patrolman going, I cannot believe how much this has helped. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So with that said, presence can make a difference. But you're talking about a concentrated presence that doesn't go away. But it can make a difference. And it has made a difference. I don't know, and somebody might correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll tell you this much, I haven't been notified of any incidents up there that amount to anything.
That's what I was gonna say.
Since the Van Dill fight that happened up there. So that, that presence worked.
I wanna say this, since, since the, since the presence, I will go as far as to say this. The only time that I ever see a crowd there is when they're, when they're all heading into, uh, the old Maple Leaf or whatever, you know, you see a crowd of kids, which, which I've never had a problem with a crowded kids. Kids are gonna, you know, they got nothing else to do. So that doesn't bother me, but uh, I'll tell you what, I, I drive through there all the time, just, just to, to see what's going on and just, you know, see what the cops are doing. You know, check it all out. And I'll tell you what, yeah, you can feel the presence, you know, you can definitely tell a difference since, uh, since you guys made a move and, and made that, you know, a greater priority, but.
And I'd like to throw a quick shout out to Eric and his Forestry Crew. You know, we made a request to them that we got way too many tree limbs, way too low to the ground, too many places to hide, dark places, and they've been up there for about a week and a half straight now. Trimming, 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 trimming. Made a request to the line, you already know that. They've got a bunch of new L E D lights up there.
Yep.
But that's that broken window theory. Start to clean it up. We'll do our part. And maybe we can start to get some citizens to do their part. And, and those things help. So I mean, with that said, now we'll, we'll jump forward one more time. I think it was in, we're gonna go backwards, I apologize for that, but I think it was in about two thousand to two thousand and one, Chief Warren Byrd, we were having all these same problems. And I know, Tim, you really remember it. And decided, well, he called it a POP unit or a problem oriented policing unit or a streets crime unit. And we had three guys assigned to this unit. And they went to Saint Louis, I believe, I'm positive it was. They went to Saint Louis and spent time with their street crimes units. And really kinda just did that. They just worked on street crimes. Again, it's this broken window theory. What we're taking care of down here, someday maybe will help up here. And they didn't just, they just weren't on South Hill. They were all over town. Any place we'd start to have a problem crop up, boom, the, the unit was assigned to that. And it wasn't long, and those problems went away. But that's when we had forty-four policemen. I can't, I can't staff a POP unit with what I have. I, I can't do it. I, I don't have the people. You know, is that the answer? You know, I don't know. I think that you got a budget session coming up, or I mean, a goal setting session coming up that everybody's gonna have a chance to participate in. And you know, is that something that gets discussed there? I, I don't know. I mean, that's a tough position for me. I, I can tell you the success a POP unit's had. And I can tell you that the success we've had on Maple Street. But at the same time, I don't want you to ever think that, well, even if we get fifty or sixty policemen, that some of these things are gonna go away.
Right.
Cause they're not. They're not. I, I do think that we can have an impact. I do think that we can make a difference. And I do think that we can create a deterrent or a sense of, don't do that in Burlington, cause you're gonna go to jail. And I think even with the forty guys, we have forty-one, but one hadn't even been in the academy yet, with the forty guys we have, I mean, they're sending that message right now. I mean, it's unbelievable what they've gotten done in, in a short amount of time. And I'm gonna kinda wrap this up. One other thing, thank goodness I checked my notes. But hopefully our animal control officer's gonna be back in two or three weeks. He had a really serious health incident. And that, that didn't help. I mean, you know, now we're out here running all the animal calls, but somebody has to do it. I mean, you know, we had the lady in here that her dog got attacked. I mean, those are serious problems too. The people need our help. And, and so we have to respond to those kinda calls. So I mean, hopefully that he'll be back, you know, and if he's not in that amount of time, you know, maybe we'll have to reevaluate what we're gonna do there. But for now, he's a great guy and we're hoping he's coming back and we're looking forward to having him back. So with that said, I just wanna commend the department. And I, and I know that, that all these incidents aren't good.
I do too. I do too. It has not been easy.
And people don't feel good about it. Well, take it times a hundred, if you're me. Cause you know, we got a lot of people down there that invested their careers in fighting crime and this, there's nobody down there impressed right now. I'll tell you that. I mean, them, they are just as upset as I am, if you will, there's no other way to say it, that this is happening in this town. But at the same time, they're doing their job and they're solving these cases and they're doing it in an incredibly timely fashion. I mean, I showed up down there this morning at about seven thirty, and I'm talking about five people now. They're not just guys, but five people that have worked probably two weeks straight without a day off, sixteen, eighteen hours a day. And I know they were here till after midnight last night. I know they were. And I get here at seven twenty, and all five of them are already at the briefing room table making out their lead list for what has to happen today. And I'm like, is somebody gonna sleep around here? Nah, right back at it. And that's something else I wanna make real clear, that when somebody goes to jail, that's the beginning for us. That's the beginning. I mean, we're getting to that probable cause stage enough to get them off the streets, but now we got a case we have to put together to, to secure a conviction. And that's search warrants and that's gathering information, interviews. It's just, it's a whole plethora of things that have to be done. So I just wanna commend them and for all their effort and I appreciate all the community support. I mean, they, they believe in us, they believe in what they're doing or what we're doing. They don't like it, well, we don't like it either. But we're not gonna quit fighting. I guarantee you that. I, I'll absolutely guarantee you that. We will throw everything we have at this. And we always have and we always will. So I mean, with that said, again, it's, it's ideas, it's suggestions. I mean, we're, we're open to anything, but at the same time, we, we wanna be cognizant that this city's in debt and that this city's in financial trouble too. So I mean, that's a tough balancing act, folks. That is a tough balancing act. So, I mean, that's kinda where we're at. That's the most, as far as the actual incidents, I feel like I can give you, like I said, I don't wanna jeopardize anything, but I mean, as these cases move along, there'll be more and more information come out, but.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well said. Um, I just, I just wanted to tap dance on, on that, just, just real quick. Just wanna give a, wanna give a thanks to the police officers, uh, under a lot of pressure. Uh, I do realize that. And, uh, uh, they've been, uh, staying very busy. But, uh, staying, staying positive and doing the job and getting it done. So, uh, do, do give a shout out to the boys and, and ladies and gentlemen, and let them know, uh, we appreciate, uh, we appreciate what they've been doing. I, I, I wanna say that I, man, when you, as soon as you hit me with the reserves, man, that, that was a sweet, precious word I've been wanting to hear. I'm not saying that that's answered everything. Again, I, I received your full message. I actually heard everything that you said. I, I know where you're coming from and I, I would agree, you know? We could hire fifty more police officers, but fifty more police officers still cannot babysit all of Burlington. It's just not, it's just not possible. So to piggyback off of that, I also wanna remind, again, uh, the citizens that it's not, it's not the job for, for the police to be magicians. You know, for somebody to just drive in there and say, you know, pick up a piece of rubber and taste it and say, okay, I believe the guy was five, seven, and he lives three blocks down the road. It takes all the crimes that get committed, things that get happened, it takes people in the community, people in the blocks saying, well, I saw a green car, it was sitting over there. These are how, these are how you guys build those cases. And it takes having a relationship, working back and forth with the community. So, um, I know there's a lot of people in the community that are frustrated right now and they, they, we have short memories, so we forget about the year before, the year before that, because there's nothing new under the sun. Crime wasn't just invented. And this wasn't the first time that we've dealt with, uh, death in Burlington. Sad to say, it won't be the last. Uh, but I, I do think that we can do things to be proactive, to, uh, to, to shut some things down. And I think it'd be a great opportunity. And I think it'd be a great opportunity for people to get to know who their neighbors are, so that they can start, uh, recognizing who that lives around them is, uh, you know, is an ally, and then who doesn't, uh, wanna be a participant, uh, that, those things help, too. So, I just wanna, again, uh, remind, uh, those that are listening, the police can't do it all. Uh, we can't hire a, an officer for every household that's in the city. That would be the only way, you know, to keep everything, for anything happened, everybody would have to have their own house, personal guard, or a, or a guard blocking every street. Well, we can't do that, nobody wants to live like that. But if we go back to communicating like we used to back in the day before everybody got caught up in their cellphones and all of that stuff, that'll open up the door for a lot of people, uh, uh, being able to maybe stop some things before we get started, and, uh, making sure that we get a good response time, and also helping the police to, uh, to get crime solved really fast, so...
Yeah, it's been great, it's been great.
Yeah, clapping, uh, my hands are clapping for the, uh, for everybody down the street from my church, uh, uh. Heck, that was, as a block away from my church, uh, just, you could slobber, uh, as, you know, to the spot as far where your daughter lives. It was, uh, I grew up in that area, just wonderful, wonderful memories. I don't remember anything like that ever happened, but I'm sure, uh, I'm sure it won't be the last time, but it would never have been if it was.
I wanna say something about that neighborhood, too, because I am very aware of that neighborhood. But, um, boy, talk about helping, you know, to get to, to know, I mean, the help of each person knowing everybody else in that few-block area. There was actually a house that some undesirables lived in, and like they were, they thought they were dealing drugs. That house was watched almost twenty-four hours a day by those people, and they turned in every little thing till those people left that neighborhood. And so that makes a difference. And the other thing is, I think there are people in that neighborhood, well, I know, are traumatized by what happened.
Absolutely.
But if they didn't know their neighbor, they'd be more traumatized, because they would feel alone, and they'd feel like, was that somebody, was he coming to... But they all know that that just happened in their neighborhood, it's not, it wasn't part of their neighborhood.
Right.
And so I think they have strength in now being able to call each other and talk about it, and, and I really recommend people get to know their neighbors. And even, you know, little two- and three-block areas really make a difference, if you know-
It really makes a difference.
-who, who your neighbors are.
Chief, I'll raise the second five thousand dollars for the reserve unit, you got my word on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Chief, you're doing a heck of a job, brother. All right, we're on the, uh, we're on the downstroke. Uh, the next is, uh, heavy truck routes, we have a dissertation, about fifty pages, so...
Mayor, Council, uh, I'm Chris Clanton, Operations Manager for Public Works. Um, I'm gonna be much more boring, I have not as much to say as he did, so... Uh, this all started, uh, before I get started, there, there's nothing new here. This is, uh, an ordinance that's been in place, its rules have been in place for years and years, I'm gonna guess the mid-nineties. Um, but a few we, uh, months ago or so, we started talking about what we can do, um, with less money, we're spending on, uh, projects and stuff for roads and stuff, what we can do to make our roads we have last longer and be less of a burden. And one thing we started talking about was the truck, uh, big trucks kinda just run where they wanted to in town. Um, when I got to talking to some of the officers down at the police station, uh, they, they were concerned they couldn't write the tickets, because some of the areas had not been signed properly in recent years, the signs get knocked down, stolen, not reported, whatever. Um, and the second problem they were having was the maps we were using were probably, I'm gonna guess, from the eighties even. And so they were very hard to get the information across to the truck drivers, where they can be and where they can't be. Uh, so, with the help of Austin Ross from, uh, Des Moines County G I S, we came up with a good map. Uh, I got together and met with, uh, one of the lieutenants down at the police station, and, and we went through the paperwork and, and, and made it so it is enforceable. Um, with that being said, we, we did go out and inspect all the signs, all the areas that need to be marked and covered, uh, as the street shop did. And we now have most of those all changed, and, um, so I, it's, it's very enforceable. Um, I think it's gonna help, you know, make the roads last longer, save some money. And, um, I think we've made it so that the police department can enforce it and pick up the enforcement on it without any issues. Um, uh, and, you know, with cases getting thrown out because it wasn't marked properly, or it wasn't done. And so I guess it's just kind of a update to you guys, to let you know that they are gonna start picking up enforcement on it.
They do.
And when you start hearing some things, this is kinda how it all got started, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
No, just other than it's kinda, it can be kinda a confusing ordinance. And probably about three or four months ago now, even with the old map that we had, we went to the Pepsi distributors, the beer distributors, all the local convenience stores, and tried to get the word out, you know, hey, we have truck routes, and here's what the rules are. Well, then we kinda noticed, like Chris said, well, some of the streets really weren't signed, and so we're just trying to get all caught up on that, and get everybody on board, and, and I think really, once people start to understand it, I don't think it's really gonna be that big of a deal. But, I mean, back in the day, we had a patrolman, I won't mention his name, everybody knows him, that just enforced this thing every day, nonstop. But, you know, at a staff meeting, we were talking about some of the issues, and the funding, and the potholes and all those things, and one of the lieutenants said, hey, what about the truck route? You know, and said, yeah, what about the truck route, let's start to look at that. So that was three or four months ago. So, again, we're still gonna go through the process to make sure everybody's educated on where you can be and where you can't be. Because the bottom line is, we got a very small handful of people, and it doesn't seem to matter. And so, I mean, I guess that's-
I shouldn't laugh about that either.
You know where that's going from there, but just to let you know that this is not tomorrow, all of a sudden, we're just gonna start enforcing this thing, because we've been at this for three or four months, and actually trying to get a plan in place to educate people first. But, but then, I mean, it's gonna roll out, but we're probably gonna start citing these people, too, so...
Good, I always wondered.
Good job, good job.
I always wondered why there were semis that went on Columbia Street sometimes.
Appreciate it.
There's one that goes on Columbia, and it's like, why would you go on that street? I mean-
I don't know.
Giant truck, and I mean, it's not a good thing.
They're lucky that officers don't work for him anymore, 'cause he'd have been had, anyway.
Well, the only thing we have to address this quickly is for some semis, there's some semi without a trailer that are parked around town. And there's no exception for that, you can't drive your semi to your house and park it there. So I just wanna get that out publicly, you can't do that.
Thank you.
Register for more than you can be on our streets. These are exceptions to this truck router for deliveries and deliveries only.
Yeah, and that's, that's my question. Is the, the weight restrictions that are on it?
Those are gross vehicle weight ratings. It doesn't matter what your vehicle weighs, it's what your vehicle's licensed to carry. So what, and that's on most door jams of what your vehicle or stuff is. So it's whatever it's licensed to carry, not what, what it actually weighs at the time it's pulled over.
If you look at your registration for your vehicle, there'll be a D B R W right on that registration. And that's what we look at, we don't have scales, it's just whatever your vehicle's registered.
Good to know.
So you've gone out again, and everybody had, I mean, the delivery places and whatnot have this information, so...
Yeah, and I don't know if they got this updated map, but that's why we put it on G I S.
Okay.
So we still maybe need to get that out there to make sure they know where to go to access the information, so we'll follow up with that.
All right.
Good deal.
They'll help on the streets, and I, they drive on these side streets, it's like, why are you there? It's unbelievable.
Steph?
I'll just, uh, the flood update, we were declared last week for a disaster, forty-one eighty-seven is the number. Uh, we've hired a consultant to help us gather all the information, so we'll start meeting with FEMA and working up the PWs. Then we'll have some better numbers on, we know what the disaster actually cost us, once we, you know, dig into the time sheets and get all the, the numbers together. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add, or if you have any questions.
Jim, was there any mitigation money that came through with that, or do you know yet?
Well, there'll be mitigation money, but it's gonna be limited to what it will be allowed to be used for. Uh, projects, the two projects that are most likely to, to have funding availability-
Lift station.
Uh, one, the lift station is one of those. Uh, the other is, uh, emergency, emergency generator for the water department.
Water box, yeah.
Now, whether those funds will actually be there that we can, can get, uh, there's still a prior, prioritization list. Now, they know the issues that have gone on down here, uh, they know that we had submitted last year and, uh, did not receive, and, and the consequences this year. So it's, it is on the state's radar. Uh, but they're, the two primary topics that they try to address with that hazard mitigation funding are, um, buying properties out of the flood zone and, uh, safe rooms.
And what?
Community safe rooms. So, essentially for tornadoes, hardened, hardened facilities that people can go to. Um, they, it doesn't mean that they don't fund other things such as this, but it, in general, this is not one of the higher priority items on their, their list. Now, we, again, we have been talking with them, and we'll see where that ends up fitting in. Charlie Nichols has been put in chart, or Knuckles?
Nichols.
Nichols. Has been put over-
Knuckles.
Been put over the area for dealing with this. Um, we're also, we're looking at other funding sources other than the hazard mitigation funds. Uh, there'll be a group of us Wednesday going up to Coralville, I think, to, to take a look at what their, what the, what they have done to put some mitigation in place for flood walls, et cetera, and, and the funding sources that they've used to take care of it. Um, we've got, have a group that's looking at a, another funding source, uh, which we're still trying to determine what the, what our eligibility is on, uh, that we may be able to go after to do not just around the lift station, but to do additional, uh, flood protection efforts along, uh, the, the riverfront. Uh, we're still trying to find out what we would potentially be eligible for down there. There's a period of time where we can, uh, go after that funding over the next year or so. Um, but then, when the funding is available, it's still something that we have to find out what, where, where that fits in. It's a funding source that's over, not just a one-year thing, but it's over the next fifteen years. Um, so, I guess that's an awful long answer to, to your question. We will be looking at mitigation funds on, uh, the lift station itself, but we have other things that we're looking at besides just that. And I don't know, what do we have for definitive dates on it? Where's the depot or, keep on saying that?
Port.
The port ad, huh?
Uh, I, I apologize, I was out of town till about three o'clock today for some last Thursday, so... I know Ray was getting bids for the carpet and doing stuff like that by the end of the week, so...
Last week. Yeah, we were, we were getting bids last week on carpet installation, and I'm not, I'm not sure what the timing is for getting that.
We've had the copies in to do the cleanup, I do know that.
The cleanup was finished last week.
I know that lady's still waiting to get into that store, she's, she really needs to get in that store, but...
Yeah, and, and that's where we had the cleanup, uh, we had a, a bid that was done to, for cleanup of the facility. They spent two weeks cleaning, uh, got done the end of last week, we had the ins, the bids for carpeting in there that were due at the end of last week, and Ray was the one that was collecting them, and I'm not sure what the timeframe is for getting something done. But our goal was to have something done, and then to have that completed in the next couple of weeks. But it was really kinda dependent on what the bids came back and the timeframes that we'd be able to get them to get in and do it.
The sooner the better, I know that she'd be tackled with it, the sooner the-
Both the Welcome Center and the Iowa store are very, very much waiting on that to get completed.
Jim, we have been ready to port out on the, the number facility and things like that, so that has to-
Yeah, we have had- We have had events in some of the, in portions of that facility already, uh, as, as we can. It's just portions where we haven't had completed yet.
You know, on the port, I mean, it's likely it's gonna flood again. I would encourage them to, or for us to maybe think about ways that we can do things there that would make it easier to get back into, you know, if you have a place that's gonna flood often, many times you can do things that make it easier to clean, or easier to get back into, maybe so the timeframe isn't so long.
I think that the, this, the first contract that we were done under would've taken that long regardless. It's this, the second part, and whether you have carpet go back in or not, or even all the tile had been ripped out, too.
I think we, and when, when Ray was looking at it, I think we poured out most of the places that were tiled, so it was almost quicker and easier to take in and out carpet than just pour it out back and forth every time.
That makes sense.
The only thing that we talked about that would be potentially easier, easier from that perspective, was if you had stamped concrete in there.
Or used a stained, some kind of an etching or staining, okay. Thanks for the update.
Okay. Consent agenda. Resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties, uh, that's in your package. Uh, also, resolution, uh, next to the resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the two thousand twelve Cascade Watership Separation Project Phase One.
Do you want any discussion on that?
You got something you need to, uh, discuss with us on?
I don't need to, I mean, it's in your packet. Okay, thanks, Chris.
The, the, the bottom line is, uh, you know, this is a project that's been out there for a while, it's taken a little while to bring it to closure. Uh, the information in your packet is, uh, you know, we put down ten thousand feet of pipe, roughly a hundred and ten sewer structures. It was budgeted at one point six-three million, and the final total came in at one point two-eight-eight and some change. Uh, there were sixteen change orders, and there was, uh, a deduction for ten and a half days of liquidated damages. So, uh, that brought it, and basically, we released everything but one percent with this recommendation for final payment. Thirty days later, we'll release the, the remaining retention of, it's in here, what, twelve thousand dollars and eight hundred and some, almost nine hundred, so... I hate to say this, the only thing I'll caution you is that, you know, we've had a gentleman show up here in the past who's been against this project and the delays, and if he shows up, and we know that, you may wanna take, I, I, I like it on the consent agenda. But with that said, if he shows up, it'll probably be due process to take it off the agenda to have it discussed, or it could be passed all of a sudden if he's not following our, our-
I've got a bad memory, I can't promi, I can't make any promises, Steve, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
I, I understand, I'm just forewarning you on this particular issue, he's had some, some issue with it, so...
And it has been the, what, what's gonna be covered for liquidated damages on days, days over. And we had a lot of, we had projects that we took them off in order to do, uh, last year with Cap on Central Street with the- with, uh, when that street, uh, caved in, we ended up pulling them off to do that was one of the big ones.
That was something we agreed upon to allow them to, some extended time for this project.
And there are some other ones that are in there that I don't know all the details on.
I do not either, but...
Okay, Council, you guys good? Um, next to the resolution, I'm adding the fee and charge schedule for special events. Um, nothing's changed on that, still gonna be the same, the same setup. Uh, set date for public hearing for, uh, one consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Huckleberry Holdings LLC and Weingard Realty Company for encroachment into City of Rightaway, uh, City Rightofway, two thousand and one Weingard Drive.
What is that?
They had some light structures, and I think some directional signs they were looking at, wanting to have an encroachment on.
Well, they put some, something else up, too?
No, if you, there's, some of their signage is-
Some of their directional signs.
Yeah, that points to the casino, into the casino, the fun city area, is in the city right of way, and they're asking for an encroachment agreement on that. Is that correct?
Yeah, and there's some parking lot light structures as well that are just over the right of way. We'll have more details on it the next work session.
Okay, I thought there was something else that they were putting up there, but, um, okay. Any other questions or comments before we dismiss today? Everybody's good? Uh-
Radio, Joe?
You bet.
Campbell and Chock.
Huh? God bless you, thank you, Steph. That's what I do to my daughter, whatever, she says, Dad, can I get some money? I'm like, huh? Act like my hearing aids bad, I don't, I-